Ready? We're good?
Yeah.
We're good? Okay. I call this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and the notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The time is six o'clock. I'd like to turn some time over to Representative Scott Moore, and then for our pledge, Mr. Ray Sanders.
If you're so inclined, I invite you to stand with me. Recognizing we have such a multitude of people here tonight and potentially different views, I'd like to invite you into a moment of silence where if you feel led, you can enter into a prayer in your own tradition, and then I'll close us with a few words. God, of all people in all places at all times, we pause tonight to ask for your guidance for this body of leaders, for all those who have come here, to share in participation in their government. But we are thankful that we live in a country where we can express our views, where we can engage in civil debate with one another, and where we can come to decisions that benefit the greater good. God, we pray that your Spirit of wisdom and discernment would be upon us, that the decisions that we make would be those that you have laid out for us, that you would help us set aside petty differences, that you would help us engage in those civil conversations, even when we may have opposing views. God, we thank you for the summer and for the respite it brings for our students and our staff. We pray for their safety in this time off, that each and every one of them may return safely to us, ready to begin a new school year with energy and enthusiasm. We thank you for those whom you have called to teach, to administer, to lead, to share of their time and their talents in this district, and we thank you for each and every child that you send to us. We pray that the education they would receive would prepare them to enter into the world and be productive citizens of this great country. God, we lift our prayers to you tonight in all the names and by all the ways we know you. Amen.
Please join me as we pledge allegiance to our country and to our state.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. Thank you, Mr. Moore, Mr. Sanders. I'd like to move to Item 2A, Special District Recognition, Patrons Influencing Education Award. Dr. Knoll.
All right. Thank you, President Hubert. And as we've done here over the last few months, it's really been a celebration as we've looked back over this last year and all that we were able to accomplish as a school district and as a community of opening all of our schools, keeping them open all year long, having the highest percentage of students learning in person, and we know that it's taken really a village to make that happen. And we've celebrated those both internal and external to Conroe ISD over the last few months, and tonight we kind of wrap that up as we celebrate our local health entities that really provided so much guidance and wisdom to us along the way. Now, we are fortunate in Conroe ISD to have been, to be led on the healthcare side by Barbara Robertson, who, as you know, was selected as the School Nurse of the Year for the state of Texas. So, we have been led by the best of the best, but even as great as Barbara is and our team is, we need help from the outside to make things happen. And tonight, we are going to get to celebrate those that made it possible for us. And to start those introductions, we're going to have Ms. Barbara Robertson, and she'll be followed by Mr. Chris McCord.
There she is.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board and Dr. Knoll. It is my pleasure to present to you this evening some outstanding healthcare partners as patrons influencing education award recipients from Conroe ISD. These healthcare partners are not new to Conroe ISD or Health Services. Through the years, I have worked with them in various situations, and they have each had an integral role in providing for the health and safety of our students and employees. When we were faced with the uncertainties of a global pandemic, we knew just who to call. From providing guidance on isolation and quarantines, safe clinic and school operations, and access to care and testing for students and employees, these individuals here tonight were ready and willing to share their expertise, some even becoming instant YouTube stars along Dr. Knoll for his live updates. All of this in a selfless effort to protect our communities, our schools, and our core function of educating students. With their support, we successfully completed the school year when many others were contemplating how to get started. We value their unwavering stewardship to the health and safety of our communities. It is my distinct privilege to present to you tonight the following community healthcare partners to receive a CISD Patrons Influencing Education Award. Ms. Karen Harwell, Chief Executive Officer for Lone Star Family Health Center.
Sorry.
It should be those. It's the plaque.
It's a plaque. Was it so right, Karen Harwell?
We owe you one.
Was it right?
We owe you one.
Definitely have a pie for you.
Yes.
So, that's important.
Reading teachers in the group here?
We'll get the right part right here. Don't worry about that.
Reading teachers?
Dr. Robert Dixon, EMS Medical Director for Montgomery County Hospital District. Chief James Campbell, Chief of EMS for Montgomery County Hospital District. Mr. Randy Johnson, Chief Executive Officer for Montgomery County Hospital District. Ms. Melissa Miller, Chief Operating Officer for Montgomery County Hospital District, is not able to join us tonight. Dr. Charles Sims, Public Health Authority for Montgomery County Public Health District. Dr. Said Ibrahim, Chief Epidemiologist for Montgomery County Public Health District. And Ms. Alicia Williams, Public Health Director for Montgomery County Public Health District, is not able to join us tonight. Thank you all, and I'll turn it over now to Chris McCord.
Y'all could stay up here. We'll just take a group picture after Mr. McCord makes his introduction.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board and Dr. Knoll. I have four representatives of Memorial Hermann to present to you this evening as patrons influencing education award winners from Conroe ISD. These key Montgomery County leaders from the Memorial Hermann Hospital in the Woodlands were pivotal at the very outset of area opportunities for COVID vaccinations to occur and getting immunizations off the ground. In short, they did much of the heavy lifting at a time we were all trying to figure out how to make life-saving vaccines workable on a large scale for Montgomery County. They worked with our district staff to take a CISD facility. It was a stadium, an auditorium, and parking lot, and in the course of one week, transformed it into one of the finest vaccine hubs anywhere. When I say one week, I do not mean that, I mean that literally. Along with our staff, many of these leaders were present night and day with our team over a seven-day stretch to ready the site to help our community. We may never know the full extent of which lives were positively impacted by their efforts. Furthermore, I appreciate the willingness of Memorial Hermann and these staffers to help aid in the transition of our Woodforce Bank Facility to use by the county for ongoing vaccinations. These individuals are friends of mine, friends of CISD in Montgomery County, so without further ado, I present to you tonight to receive a CISD Patron Influencing Education Award, Mr. Justin Kendrick, Senior Vice President and CEO of Memorial Hermann, the Woodlands Medical Center, and Northeast Hospital. Mrs. Linda Nelson, Director of Business Development and Marketing at Memorial Hermann, the Woodlands Medical Center. Mr. Jason Glover, Vice President of Operations. Mr. Glover could not be here this evening, but we send our regards to Jason. And also, Mrs. Kate Willis, Director of Hospital Operations.
So, on behalf of the school board and Dr. Knoll and the entire CISD family, we really appreciate you guys. You guys really rocked. You shined last year, and you continue to shine, and you really don't appreciate you guys until you need you. So, we needed you, you came through, you shined for us, you kept us safe, you kept us healthy, you continue to do so. You're always in the background waiting to be called, and last year, this year, you continue to answer that call, and we just thank you. Can't say it enough, you guys are truly unsung heroes for the district. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Appreciate you. And one last thing. A patron, this is a patrons influencing education award acronym PI, and it wouldn't be a truly a pie award without handing you guys a nice pecan pie, so we want to make sure we send you off with that. We're going to get your picture first, and we're going to make sure we hand you guys a nice pecan pie. So, thank you for everything you do and continue to do for the district. We really appreciate you guys.
You want to come around this way, we'll shake hands, and then you get your pie at the end. You got to earn it here. Come on through. Congratulations.
Thank you for your service. We appreciate you. Thank you for your service. Keith, thank you so much for your service. Appreciate it very much. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for everything. We appreciate you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you, sir, for your service.
Thank you so much for all you do. Hey, thanks very much. God bless you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So nice to get to meet you. Thank you, sir. Linda! So much to see you.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And you have, right?
So nice to see you.
Thank you, I appreciate you, sir.
You are a rock star.
All right. Item 2B, Special Board Recognition Ambassador Award District for our support staff. Dr. Knoll.
All right. Once again, this is kind of a wrap-up of our last school year. We have the opportunity to celebrate ambassador awards every year from every campus and every district department, and tonight, we celebrate those here in the district level. So, to make our introductions and our celebrations tonight, Ms. Sarah Blake-Clock.
Thank you. Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board and Dr. Knoll. It is my pleasure tonight to present to you some more of our outstanding employees who have really just shown this past year. First off, we have Ellen Cooper. When I say your name, please come forward. Ellen Cooper. Ellen has been with Conroe ISD for 29 years, 21 of which have been in the payroll department, and she's contributed in many positive ways, especially this past year, because she has played a significant role in helping communicate with employees about leave. And so, there are often challenging times, and she works just effortlessly and so kindly with these employees during this time. So, thank you, Ellen. Jennifer Cox. Jennifer has been with CISD for 14 years and in information systems for four years. She provides all administrative support for the department and answers the essential help desk tickets. This past year, she's also created some systems to help campuses with the different technology needs as we have become more widespread with our technology use. So, thank you, Jennifer. Tracy Peterson. Tracy has been with Conroe ISD for 10 years and does an outstanding job of helping parents. She's often one of the first people they speak with, and she is just so kind and effortless in the way that she assists them, and just a bright spot to so many people's day. She also goes out of her way to help other departments. So, thank you, Tracy. Jessica Villarreal. Jessica has been instrumental in assisting some of our new team members up here at the administration building. She goes out of her way to seek additional opportunities, and it just really helps people feel welcome, and many thanks, Jessica, for all you do. Clay Shugart. Clay is an excellent staff member who provides the most amazing customer service and handles technology repairs that require a great deal of skill and patience. He's been with CISD for almost 25 years and was the technology repair shop's first technician. He can always be trusted to find solutions for our users with his years of experience and dedication to service, so thank you, Clay. Unable to be with us tonight is Corporal Brad Fulmer. He began with the CISD Police Department in 2010. He has served the district in a variety of capacities over the past 11 years. He's trained new recruits and done other trainings for the department. He instructs new officers in critical topics, but one of the most important things he does is he works closely with his peers, campus administrators, campus staff, students, to ensure that our schools are safe each and every day in our all-mains-all motto. So, thank you, Corporal Fulmer. And last, but definitely not least, we have Debbie Walters. Debbie has worked in print shop for 27 years. She has been with the district for 25 years full-time. She's very knowledgeable about the many pieces of binary equipment and is always eager to help other areas with whatever is needed. She is a joy and a treasure to have with us on a daily basis. So, thank you, Debbie.
Hi, thanks, Sarah. It's so nice to hear about all these accomplishments you guys have, and all I can really add to it is y'all have so much to be proud of. And on behalf of the board, we'd just like to offer our sincere gratitude for all of your hard work and efforts and how thankful we are to have you as ambassadors to Conroe ISD. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate all you do.
Congratulations. Very impressive.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Great job. Sorry about the switch up.
Thank you so much for all you do. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Everything is here.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Debbie.
We appreciate everything.
How are you doing? So good to see you tonight.
All right. Our next item is Item 3, Citizens' Participation. I do understand we have a few people signed up tonight?
Yes, we do.
I've got a statement to read. The next item on the agenda is public comments for those who have registered to address the board in accordance with Board Policy, BED. Everyone is reminded that this portion of the meeting is not the appropriate forum for bringing complaints for which resolution is sought. Before complaints can be submitted to the Board of Trustees as an agenda item, they must be addressed by following the appropriate policies and administrative procedures. Also, please keep in mind that the board has an obligation to protect the confidentiality of information that could personally identify a student. The board cannot permit comments that include students' names or any information that might identify a specific student. This prohibition does not apply if the person speaking is the student's parents or guardian or is over the age of 18 and speaks about him or herself. If an issue is mentioned that is on tonight's posted agenda, the board will defer its decision, discussion of the issue until the item is reached on the agenda. For any, for any subject that is not on the board's posted agenda, the board cannot deliberate or make a decision, but it can furnish specific factual information or cite existing policy in response to inquiries. Each person is limited to no more than three minutes for this, for their comments. This will allow the board to hear from citizens as well as ensure that the board meeting runs efficiently, as there are many important items on the board's agenda that must be considered. Each speaker's three-minute time limit will be displayed on the screens around the room, as you can see up here. When the countdown timer reaches zero, the speaker's time has come to an end, and the next speaker will be called. Everyone in attendance is reminded to treat all speakers with respect, regardless of whether you agree or disagree with the speaker's message. Any person who does not include him or herself, who does not conduct him or herself accordingly, will be asked to leave or will be escorted from the room. Before you call your first person, I felt it appropriate that we read a statement, a very brief statement that we submitted out to the public earlier this year, earlier this week. It's specifically about the critical race theory. So, critical race theory is not part of the Conroe ISD curriculum. Conroe ISD's curriculum. Conroe ISD's curriculum is and will continue to be based on the state-mandated Texas Essential Knowledge of Skills, TEACs, that are available from the Texas Education Agency. That is our sense. So, with that, Ms. Godfrey, will you please call your first person?
Edward Scruggs.
Thank you, members of the board. Thank you for the introduction about CRT, because I do want to talk about that. There is a famous quote that says, "These are the times to try men's souls." I'm sure you agree with me that Thomas Paine's statement is as relevant today as it was when it was penned 245 years ago. The times are similar, and there were crises in the country. Then, there was a Revolutionary War. Now, there is tyranny that has taken over our government's systems across the U.S., and that is all forms of government, including some school boards. You are charged with the proper education of our children that will allow them not only to compete in the world arena, but also to become productive citizens in this great country of ours. CRT is not how that is done. Had CRT been the educational model in Detroit, Michigan in 1968, we would never have known the benefit of a certain young man. He and his brother were raised by their single mother, who worked two, maybe sometimes three jobs to provide for her family. This person was angry at his status in life and did poorly in school, even though his mother made the two boys read several books a week and write reports. Not, they did not know that she could not read the reports, but they did the reports anyway. At one point, this young man got angry, and with his best friend, tried to stab him. Fortunately, the knife hit a belt buckle and broke and did no harm. That proved to be the turning point in that young man's life that led him to the Lord. His mother instilled in him a strong work ethic and a belief that he could accomplish whatever he wanted to do in life. Had CRT been enforced at that time, teaching you that mattered, that you mattered only because of your skin color and that you had no opportunities to better yourself because of racism, this man, we know as Dr. Ben Carson today, would not have emerged as the world's leading authority on pediatric brain surgery and eventually the Secretary of HUD under President Trump. I submit to you, ladies and gentlemen of the board, and to Dr. Knoll, CRT in any form, any form, no matter what it's called, SEL or whatever you might want to call it, has no place in our educational system. To do so would set the Civil Rights Movement back 70 years. You would be discounting the sacrifices of Rosa Parks, the children who integrated the schools in Alabama, and the efforts of our, of Dr. Martin Luther King to get equal rights for everyone. His dream was to unite, not divide, which is the basic underlying principle of CRT. Any effort to implement such a divisive program will be met with immediate and strong parental opposition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Diaz.
Diaz? You said Diaz?
Diaz. Rachel Walker.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, Dr. Knoll. In our home, we have a family motto, and that motto is, "When hate is loud, love is louder." Well, that, and please rinse your dishes before you put them in the sink. That one never happens. Unfortunately, there is a continual voice among you that speaks hate over and over again. I'm not here tonight to talk about that voice. I'm here tonight to employ the voices of love to speak up. We can't hear you over the hate. I know that love is patient, and I know that love is kind, but a long time ago, pure love in human form walked this earth, and there's this story about one time he flipped a table. So, sometimes, love is bold. It is no longer enough to read about your support in an email or to have you quietly pull me aside and assure me that you stand on the side of love. I need you to be louder. Queer CISD students need you to be louder. My queer kid needs you to be louder. So, in cheesy Julia Roberts rom-com fashion, I'm going to keep this short and end with this. I'm just a mom, standing in front of a school board, asking you to love her queer kid, but I need you to speak up. Some of you have told me that you do, but I need you to speak a little louder, because when hate is loud, love should always, always be louder. Thank you.
Charles Montgomery. Charles Montgomery.
First, I want to thank Dr. Knoll and the staff for a safe year last year. I know it must have been difficult, but it was also difficult on our kids, and that is what I'm here to talk about, masks and vaccines. I'm guessing you're going to say you will not force vaccinate our kids, because legally, you can't yet, thank God, but that you will recommend vaccines if we knew, you will recommend vaccines, and if we do not vax our kids, you will make them wear masks and other our children. Do I have that about right? Are you going to other my kids and thousands of other kids that do not elect to get this vaccine that is proven to be unnecessary for kids? Are you going to stick them in another room, give them less opportunities as vaccinated kids? Are you really going to do that? Would you all agree that our kids are not some trial experiment? Then why would anybody in their right mind push for this nonsense? Everyone says trust the science, but nobody wants to discuss the data. Isn't that what science is? I am a data junkie, so let's discuss the data. Aside from essentially 0% chance of our kids under 18 dying from COVID, and before I move on, some headliners will scream, 300-plus kids died from COVID last year, but nobody reads the footnotes, because John Hopkins' research further confirms that the 300 deaths in children under 18, and now I am quoting, mortality rate was zero among children without pre-existing medical conditions such as leukemia. I repeat, mortality rate of zero. That is the science, not the propaganda other outlets are pushing. Let's review some more data. Over the weekend, UK announced 50,000 new COVID cases, with 60% of those people being fully vaccinated. Let's think about that. Over half of the new COVID cases were fully vaccinated. Make that make sense. Oh, you need some more local data? Okay. The criminal, the criminal Texas Democrats that skipped town to avoid voting the other day, they were all, they were all fully vaccinated, but they just got COVID. How does that work? If vaccines work, how does that work? If the vaccine doesn't work... If the vaccine doesn't work, why are you considering forcing it on our children? Look at the vaccine, more vaccine science. The VAERS website, which is administered by the current administration, has over 9,000 deaths. This lawsuit that was filed yesterday has 45,000 deaths. Also, 400,000 negative effects, such as infertility, myocarditis, miscarriages, strokes, seizures, to name a few. So why should parents even chance it when no kids under 18 are dying from the virus? You tell us to trust the science, but obviously that is not what you mean. What you really mean is trust the government. So tell me, where is the science that backs up vaccinating our kids or wearing masks?
Jason Rocha. Jason Rocha.
One second. Mr. Rocha, before you come up, in, in, in the statement that I read, it says, "We can offer factual information about that." So the factual information is, we as a school board and as a school district are not mandating mask, COVID vaccines, or suggesting any students have to get any of that stuff to attend school. Thank you, Mr. Rocha.
No, thank you. Hi, guys. My name is Jason Rocha. I am the founder and CEO of the Woodlands Pride, and I'm here on behalf of the Woodlands Pride today. Unfortunately, I've come here before to talk in a personal manner, but this time it's about the love and about the participation that we ask of you. So often, we hear stories of bullying and kids going through different trials. You know, the gentleman just spoke, talked about caring for the kids. And what if one of those ways to care for the kids was to show them that you support them in all ways? Because on your website, after the debacle two years ago with one of your fellow board members, you added that "all means all." And wouldn't it be nice if you actually showcased that to your students by having an exhibit booth at the Woodlands Pride Festival on October 30th at Town Green Park? So we invite all of you as well, all of the attendees here tonight. We invite every single board member. Dr. Knoll, we'd love to see you. All the teachers, staff, and faculty. Because what better and bigger move could you show your students you support them than by showing up at a festival that supports every single student? Did you know that a student that comes from a non-accepting home has an eight times more chance, likelihood of committing suicide than a home from an accepting home, than a student from an accepting home? So imagine that student. They, they're, they're at home. No one accepts them there. Then they go to school, and they hear a board member and the words that they say. Then they hear a government that a lot of, a lot of the board members have a party affiliation with, that say the same exact thing. So nonstop, these kids are hearing they are not valid, that they are less than. And so I don't enjoy coming up here, because it only reminds me that one of my elected officials think that I'm less than because I'm queer. Every time I come up here, I have to remind myself, "Oh, I'm less than," in one of their eyes, at least one of their eyes. I'm 30, 35. Imagine what that feels like if you're a 15-year-old or a 12-year-old. So, on a positive note, I invite you all to the Woodlands Pride Festival on October 30th at Town Green Park, even you, so that you can see the love that our people have for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ginger Russell.
On the heels of that, first of all, as a Christian, it's not loving to you to not point out the sin of homosexuality. So, you don't want us to love y'all.
Just come to, this, this meeting is for us.
They don't want us to love them. They want us to affirm their homosexual. You're, you're interrupting my time. Anyway, if you go to the scriptures, sin and pride, the sin of pride and homosexuality is wrong. And until we start facing that, it's not loving to tell people that being a homosexuality is okay.
Do you have something for us, for the school board? That's what this time is for.
I'm speaking to you, and you're interrupting me, Skeeter.
I'm just trying to let you know that.
Skeeter, you're interrupting me.
I'm trying to respect everybody in the room, okay? Everybody has different opinions, that's fine.
Anyway.
I'm going to give you your time, but I want you to understand, please talk to us, not the, not the audience.
I've been looking at you. Okay, in relation to CRT, you said you don't teach it. That is, that's not true, Skeeter. They've implemented social emotional learning, and due to the funding y'all get from the federal government, because you're not an independent school anymore, you have implemented CRT. That is part of the curriculum. Even your own improvement plan, you stated here. Conroe ISD, all campuses and staff will undergo cultural and diversity awareness training. In Conroe ISD, hiring campus personnel to reflect the cultural and diverse student body as a priority. It's no longer important to find the best person for the job, you look at their skin color to make sure it's diverse. This is Marxism. As Dr. Martin Luther King had it right, judge us not by our content of our character, but by the color of our, not the color of our skin. We should all be judged on that premise and not by the critical race theory or intersexuality, et cetera. William Raspberry said, "Find me a black child with ambition, confidence, and determination, and I'll show you the child's future and success. Find me a white child without ambition, confidence, and determination, and I'll show you the, the child's future failure. Opportunities given to him will not spell success, and opportunities denied to the black child will not cause, cause him to fail." The school district funds Tessa and Tasby. Tessa and Tasby has been implemental in fighting Steve's toast bill against critical race theory. So you're funding these lobbying groups, but then y'all are telling us you don't teach CRT, but we know that's not true. So Skeeter, what are you going to do?
Kristen Gourisco. Kristen Gourisco.
Thank you, members of the board. My name's Kristen Gourisco, and I am the mother to an amazing dyslexic daughter who's going to be going into the third grade this year. My daughter and I were able to spend some time at the Capitol during the 87th legislative session advocating for House Bill 3880, also known as the Beckley-Wilson Act. I'm here today to give y'all all a quick recap of the bill. HB 3880 was very important to us, because my daughter, like many others in our district and around our state, was denied dyslexia testing for nearly a year. We watched our daughter's self-esteem and grades drop drastically as she fell further behind all her peers. Once my daughter's FIE was complete, she was then denied her federal right to be served under IDEA on an IEP, and she was pushed into a 504 plan. While advocating at the Capitol, we met dyslexic families, children, parents from all over the state that share the same exact story as ours. Amazingly, 3880 left the House floor with a standing ovation and 143 ayes and zero nays. And as I'm sure you all know, this does not typically happen in politics. The Senate Education Committee then voted and passed the bill to move forward to the Senate floor. Unfortunately, before the bill was read on the Senate floor, Angela Paxton and Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick completely destroyed our bill and rewrote it into a study. The Senate then failed to appoint anyone for a special conference, and therefore, our bill was dead. There are no words to describe the disappointment shared among parents and our children, who had spent countless hours at the Capitol advocating for this bill that is so needed. The U.S. Department of Education already conducted a three-year-long investigation and determined that Texas is denying dyslexic students their federal IDA rights. Though our bill was killed, we do not look at this as a failure. Over 45,000 people from around Texas have come together to form the Texas Dyslexic Coalition, and we will continue to fight for the children, for our children's rights. I hope that Conroe ISD will move forward implementing the positive changes that the SBOE is currently making to the Dyslexia Handbook and will lead the path for our districts around the state. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Diane Daniels.
Good evening. I would like to remind all the attendee here that our board is elected, and Mr. Inman, Mr. Sanders, Mrs. Hubbard is up for reelection in November 2022, Mr. Williams, Mr. Wagman, Mrs. Chase, and Mr. Moore are up in 2024. The reason I mention this is because we need to hold you accountable for what you say you're going to do.
Sure.
Okay? You say there's no critical race theory. You say there's no critical race theory, and I'd like to believe that, but in my heart, I don't. You might rename it, as they said. When I was raised, "Do what is right," my father always said this to me, all his children growing up. It was simple and true, always do what is right. Your parents raise the children. You love them, and the school teaches them academics, reading, writing, and arithmetic. Together, we have strong, independent children who love all human beings. We have interracial families that love one another. To teach CRT or SEL will teach hate. Do not indoctrinate the children into hate. Judge people by their character, not the color of the skin, insightful words by Martin Luther. We also have, God has given everyone what they need to succeed. We need to use it. We need to draw this out of the children. Teach the children how to believe in themselves. Do not teach hate. Do the right thing for the children. Do not teach CRT and Conroe ISD and social emotional learning. On another note, I would like to further understand why Conroe ISD partnered with Kelsey Sebel to promote the vaccinations of 12 to 17-year-olds. I personally protested at both. I don't understand how you can send this out. Parents look to you for guidance. When they see an email come from you, they think, "Oh, we got to go do this." None of you have any of the information set behind that so many people are dying from this. As the previous gentlemen state, the lawsuit was set 45,000 deaths from the vaccine, and you decided to coordinate with Kelsey and promote this? It's all on your decisions. These are poor decisions. This should not have happened, and I don't believe that you're not going to do another one. So I'd like to know if there's an agenda to pursue a second set of vaccines for the children that might not have been 12 years old when this first flyer was sent out. I want to know who's voting for it or who is making that decision, because we need to fight it. It is wrong.
Ms. Daniels, I'm happy to call you and talk to you offline as well and answer your questions for you. Go ahead.
Deborah Whitner.
Hello. My name is Deborah Whitner, and to the Board of Conroe Independent School District, I want you guys all to know you have an opportunity to show that you care and that you affirm the LGBTQ+ student population as well as the greater community by participating in this year's The Woodlands Pride Annual Festival at Town Green Park on October 30th, 2021. It has been brought to my attention recently that a certain board member, an elected official representing this district, has displayed contempt and hateful comments toward the LGBTQ community on his public social media page. I know this is not news to some. It is, it was news to me. And I just want to go back and repeat some of this. In an October 29, 2019 article, an elected member of this board stated, "The LGBT community is one of the most vile, hate-filled communities I've ever come across, and I've spent time in the Middle East with Hezbollah and radical Muslims," this person said. "These folks are vicious." Earlier this month, this person continued to express these very negative opinions about the LGBTQ plus community. I have screenshots, if anyone's curious. And while he is entitled to have his opinions and religious views concerning, it is concerning to me that a member of this board, of trustees for a public school district, publicly reviles a portion of its students. The suicide rate for LGBTQ youth is already too high. How can these students feel safe when they are represented by someone who hates them? I've emailed these concerns to the other board members, and I understand that none of you can ask this person to step down. I did hear back from a few, for instance, you, Mr. Knoll. I'm, hi, sorry. You replied that Mr. Inman speaks only for himself. His words do not reflect the opinions of Conroe ISD, the board, or me. He is an elected official, and as such, it is the voter's decision about his service. I do not have the authority to remove any members of our board. So, if you do not share in this person's very public contempt and hateful comments toward the LGBT community, many that are going to your school district, then I ask you, the board, to prove it by showing up big for these amazing kids and joining the Woodlands Pride Festival on October 30th, and wear a T-shirt letting us know you are part of Conroe ISD, because talk is cheap. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
John Mansiewicz.
Hello, members of the board. My name is John Mansiewicz. I'm a pastor at Grace Community Church at the Woodlands. My grandparents are Russian. My parents are Argentinian. My wife's Colombian. I was born in Mexico. I became a U.S. citizen legally after many years of paperwork and thousands of dollars, almost all of my savings. My kids are born here, in Texas. But I am also, I'm also Christian, and it is my understanding that there are hundreds of families in Montgomery County that are Christian. So I'd like to address the critical race theory from a Christian perspective. God did not create one particular type of man when He created Adam. He created a human being who would be able to represent the whole humanity in the Garden of Eden. The color of Adam's skin was irrelevant to his role as mankind's representative. When God created the first two humans, the only distinction He thought relevant to make was their biological sex, men and women, because all women, all humans are equally created in God's image. All humans are sacred and should be protected and valued at all levels of society and by all other image bearers. Being created in God's image sets humanity apart from the rest of creation as the rulers and subduers. Being equally made in the image of God also means that no single group of people is naturally fit to rule over others because of some biological difference. It means that all humans are, at their core, similar. CRT is not compatible with the biblical worldview. CRT presents a fundamentally flawed epistemology rejecting transcendent, objective truth as a binding standard for all people. The Bible does not limit the sins of partially hatred, injustice, or bearing false witness to those in power, those making the definition of racism, prejudice, plus power incompatible with the Bible's teaching. The Bible explicitly forbids mob rule and deference to the poor or oppressed class. The Bible categorizes all humanity... The Bible categorizes all humanity within the default state of in-Adam. Therefore, one group of people, whites, are not born more guilty than racial minorities, and racial minorities are not born more innocent than whites. White people are not born guilty of the sins of past generations who happen to have the same skin color. Each man will give an account for his own sin. The Bible does not frame inequality of outcome between different people groups as something inherently wrong, as CRT does. The Bible forbids evil suspicions, making CRT's inherent suspicions about white people sinful. CRT addresses the wrong problem, and it will never end racism. And you will not teach that nonsense baloney to my kids.
Yes, sir.
Members of the board, Dr. Noel. My name's Elias Perez. I'm thankful for the platform to allow me to speak here today. I'm here in support for all teachers of CISD after going through a tough and challenging 2020, 2021 school year. I want to say thank you for your service, dedication, and hard work. Absolutely tremendous. I'm also here in support for a particular teacher, the orchestra teacher for Collins Intermediate, Alicia Lynn Perez Gibbs. Yes, Alicia's my daughter.
Awesome.
Sorry.
That's fine.
I'm proud of my daughter for what she did and what she has accomplished. She has three beautiful children, a great husband, former Marine who served the country honorably. 2020, 2021 school year was my daughter's first year to teach. She survived it. Alicia teaches orchestra for the fifth and sixth grade students. At this level of beginning orchestra, there is no traditional performance, professional chairs or concert masters. It's the teacher's prerogative to arrange students in a manner to make the orchestra perform and sound better. The students are seated in their positions for the greater good of the orchestra. After the spring concert Alicia had prepared and conducted, Alicia's character was lied about and damaged by Joseph Lew. I have to correct the record. Mr. Lew was given an explanation by Alicia about the seat arrangements. He just didn't like it. He didn't like the way it was prepared. Mr. Lew repeatedly called Alicia a racist, harming her character. Mr. Lew said that in the spring concert, his child was replaced by a white student. The truth is, the child that switched chairs with Mr. Lew's son was an Asian student, and he calls that racist. I'm here to say that Alicia's not a racist and doesn't have any nefarious hidden agendas claimed by Mr. Lew. Mr. Lew, you should be ashamed of yourself. You're a bully, and you mischaracterize Alicia Gibbs. I cannot sit here quietly and allow this to happen. I urge you, Mr. Lew, to stop exaggerating the incident and stop calling my daughter a racist. Retract all that you've said about Alicia. Slander is harmful. Thank you very much for the opportunity for speaking.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Amita Russo, as an academic, a researcher, a data junkie with degrees in nursing and in education, including a PhD, I have to speak out. My concern is about our children's safe return to school. The CDC guidelines include some sensible points: children learn best in person; if not well, stay home; hand washing, good ventilation, all common sense. Most key points offered by the CDC have been proven to be nonsensical, hurtful, and downright dangerous medically. First of all, the PCR test is misapplied, incorrectly used, rendering false data useless. Masks do not help, they hurt medically, scientifically, as a qualified, experienced nurse. They let small microbes through, capturing the larger bacteria, together with higher levels of carbon dioxide. They hurt our children's ability to think clearly and causing respiratory conditions. Do not wear masks. Lockdowns hurt our economy, our people, and society. This six-feet, three-feet rule, who came up with those numbers? Do you know that earth circulate, earth air circulate? And when you look at, what did we say? The CDC says, use good ventilation. That means earth air is moving. My air is already at you. Your air is with me. Where does this come from? It crossed the boundaries. That is nonsensical. Why do we have social distancing? It's foolish. Then, you look at worse. This injection is not a vaccine. Medically, it's not a vaccine. It's a jab. What is in that jab? I'm asking you as a scientist, as a researcher, what is in that jab? You guys who are here who are putting this in our children, who are putting this in people we love, they put it in my daughter! What is in that thing? Have you ever tried a minute to see what's in it? No, you didn't. It's not a vaccine. It's a jab. It's an injection. It has not been tested. It has not been proven. It has not been approved at all. It is only for emergency, and where's the emergency? Did you look at the statistics, the death statistics around the world? Did we see a spike in deaths? No, we didn't. Where is your emergency? Do not put these things in our children. Do not reinforce the masks. Do not enforce the CDC guidelines. They are fraudulent.
I think you'll be happy with the next year.
Hello. Thank you for having me. My name is Carrie Bigford, and I am the mother of two, soon-to-be-three Conroe ISD students. I stand here today to voice my concerns about the Saturday vaccination clinics and partnership between medical establishments like Kelsey Sebold and CISD. Perhaps this district could take a moment to pause before they decide to promote the COVID-19 vaccine on campus and with parents. The flyer that was sent out to parents and resulted in hundreds of students participating in the vaccination campaign is misleading. The flyer mentions no potentiality of harm, nor does the Kelsey Sebold website, and references a nearly 100% efficacy rate, but does not clarify that the conclusion of that efficacy rate was reached based on just 18 positive COVID cases out of a trial of 2,260 healthy adolescents. The children enrolled in that trial were dosed the first dose in March of 21, the second in April of 2021. By May of 2021, approval was granted for the Pfizer vaccine to be given to all children aged 12 and up. And by the end of June 2021, CISD had held two vaccination drives in conjunction with Kelsey Sebold, a liability-free medical entity. The exact safety study that was used to gain approval will not even be completed until 2023, and the raw safety data for the trial will not be released for peer review for another 18 months after that. It will be mid-2024 at the earliest before we have an even semi-clear picture of the true safety and efficacy profile of this vaccine. No wonder they called it Operation Warp Speed. As a parent, I am unwilling to accept anything less than thorough when it comes to the short and long-term health of my child, especially considering that the emotional, physical, financial cost of any injuries must be borne exclusively by my family, as there is no liability for the manufacturers and administrators of this medical intervention. The singular, according to Pfizer, the singular study endpoint for this irrevocable medical intervention was a mitigation of symptoms in a mild to moderate infection. For a population whose hallmark during the pandemic was either asymptomatic or extremely mild symptom presentation, that's just not good enough for the school district to jump on the marketing bandwagon and proclaim that this vaccine is the safest or the best solution for students. Since the rollout of this liability-free, first-of-its-kind, irrevocable medical intervention, VAERS has reported 463, 456 adverse events as of July 7 of this year. Adverse events such as strokes, thrombosis, seizure, heart attack, myocarditis, pericarditis, and Guillain-Barre syndrome. The age group in question of 12 and up that CISD is so recklessly marketing to has experienced 1,158 serious adverse events that involve death, disability, threat to life, or hospitalization.
Ms. Bigford, thank you for your
Kathy LoCetta.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your statement before.
Yes, ma'am.
I hope that it is true. As a 30-year county resident and taxpayer, I'm here to caution you about Item 5 on tonight's agenda entitled "Safe Return to In-Person Instruction." That will be discussed later tonight. I am concerned, due to your refusal to lift the mask mandate even after Governor Abbott issued an executive order prohibiting government entities from requiring mask-wearing on May 18, 2021. I emphatically stand against the updated CDC guidelines that promote so-called vaccinations, require masks for unvaccinated students, recommend social distancing, weekly testing, contact tracing, isolation, and quarantining for fall 2021. We, the people, will not allow these horrific policies to be foisted upon Montgomery County adults or children. I have some questions and some answers to help you do your homework before attempting to implement any of these tyrannical CDC guidelines in the fall. Are any of you aware of Dr. Reiner Fulmek's legal litigation on the COVID-19 fraud? His international team is comprised of hundreds of lawyers and medical experts who have begun legal proceedings over the CDC, the WHO, and the Davos Group for committing crimes against humanity. Fulmek has said the PCR test fraud and the COVID-19 will be the case of the century. He said, "We need a Nuremberg 2.0." And there is no pandemic. This is all about getting, this is all about getting people to take the shot. I recommend that you study this lawsuit well. Have any of you heard of Dr. Carey Mullis? He is the Nobel Prize inventor of the PCR test, who mysteriously, just before the pandemic, died. He said that the PCR test was not made to detect any type of infectious disease. Are you aware that on December 14, 2020, the WHO finally admitted in the wake of international lawsuits that the PCR test was used worldwide to diagnose COVID-19 was not fit for purpose? I urge parents and taxpayers to study the revised CDC guidelines titled "Guidance for COVID Prevention in K-12 Schools" on the CDC website. In closing, if the Conroe ISD Board implements any of these tyrannical CDC recommendations, we, the people of Montgomery County, will stand against them. And I have a handout with links to the cited sources for board members, media, or any concerned citizens here tonight. Thank you.
I'm going to add to some of the, just great comments and truthful comments about vaccines and masks. I'm a double-board certified foot and ankle surgeon practicing in Conroe for 38 years. I have award-winning publications in national medical journals, invented medical devices to improve on orthopedic surgery, and most recently, along with seven doctors, including a world-renowned epidemiologist and cardiologist, co-authored an online consumer manual put out by the American Association of Physicians and Surgeons called "Home-Based COVID Treatment." I am part of a rapidly growing number of physicians who are strongly opposed to mandating or coercing anyone, especially the parents of children or even children directly, into receiving an experimental biological gene therapy misrepresented as a COVID vaccine. The synthetic chemicals have not undergone time-honored safety and efficacy testing, and this negligence has proven, within just a few months, to be one of the most horrific human medical experiment disasters in recent history. The various vaccines are not 60 to 90% effective, but only 1.3% and less. As Dr. Malone, the inventor of the messenger RNA technology, has cited some very disturbing stats from an actuary firm that found that females 12 to 17 years old were 72% more likely to die from the COVID vaccine than the disease itself. There are also no process for informed consent, which has been the moral and ethical bedrock before performing medical procedures, which in the injection is, since the human rights atrocities of World War II. The vaccine does not prevent anyone from contracting the virus. It does not prevent transmission of the virus by those vaccinated, and it's showing that the vaccinated are now even more susceptible to other strains, including the Delta variant. While the vaccine may only reduce symptoms in some, they can even be more dangerous because of vaccinated carriers with minimal symptoms can unknowingly pass the virus to others. In the United States, over 11,000 deaths, yes, from the VAERS program, and over a half million injuries have been reported. These deaths reported in just seven months are nearly three times more than all vaccine injuries reported to VAERS over the last 20 years. However, this official government reporting site for vaccine injuries is known to be so inept that, according to a Harvard report, only 1% of all injuries are actually being reported. So the actual COVID vaccine deaths is less likely to be, is more likely to be much, much worse. How much worse? To give you an idea, the whistleblower from the inside VAERS recently stepped forward, which we heard from some of the others here.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Reed.
Dr. Noel and the board. I'm going to continue on Dr. Reed's talk. To give you some idea, one whistleblower from inside the VAERS system recently stepped forward with a lawsuit and testified that at least 45,000 deaths have occurred from the vaccine just in the U.S., along with what you heard earlier. It is clear that something is seriously wrong with this vaccine technology, which already had multiple failures in the past without resolution. These untested synthetic gene therapy agents have also been shown to travel to other organs from the ejection site, including the brain, heart, and other organs with the highest concentration in the ovaries, with an 82% increase in spontaneous abortions of those women less than 20 weeks into pregnancy. More to the point, in our children, there are unprecedented numbers of heart damages cases called myocarditis, requiring three to five times more hospitalizations than the virus itself, and unresolved brain damage in some children who have been vaccinated. For anyone to mandate, coerce, or even highly recommend the injection of our innocent children with this untested biological with this untested biological gene therapy for a virus that has a 99.997, nearly 100% survival rate in those under 20 years old, is appalling, inhumane, and may even be considered criminal for those official promoters when all is said and done. The other issue, the other issue that has recently come up is the possibility of returning to masking of school-aged children. I would be happy to address this issue at another time, but it is accurate to say that the research by far shows that masks do not work to stop the spread of these viruses or protect someone from contracting viruses. Both the flu viruses are about .1 micron in diameter, and even the N95 mask can only filter out 95% of the particles, .3 microns and above. I also did that research and found the same thing that Dr. Reed did. It is perhaps like trying to stop a mosquito by putting a chain-linked fence around your yard. Masks can also cause both severe bacterial and viral infections to those wearing masks, and according to many doctors and mental health officials, can be physically and psychologically abusive, especially to children, and cause lifelong psychological disorders. I appeal to the board to seriously consider these facts when addressing COVID vaccine, the jab, and mask issues. Thank you.
Hello, Dr. Noel, members of the board. My name is Connor Ernest, and I just really do find it funny that the NAACP decided that they'd take their time last month and decide that they wanted to talk to you guys about critical race theory and how great of an ideology that it is, yet they're the same group that back in the 1960s that marched with Dr. King, that marched with John Lewis, and they said that all men are created equal. They agreed and concurred with those things that we have in our founding documents. Yet now, today, they don't? I mean, there's something that I'm missing here. Today, that they're going along with the same ideology that is in concurrence with CScope, in concurrence with Common Core, in concurrence with critical race theory, and all of the above, that basically says, whenever you're born, not the merit of who you are and what you can do, and the endurance, whether you're a runner, or, I mean, if you can dunk a basketball, or if you can, I mean, the grades you get on the SAT, or that math test, that doesn't matter. It's the color of your skin, and I just really find that funny. And to go along with that, if you guys haven't watched the movie Uncle Tom, The Oral History of the Black Conservative, which is produced by my friend Shadow Jackson, you guys should really use some research on this, it characterizes the difference between W.B. Dubois, the founder of the NAACP, and the conservative black movement, which was led by Booker T. Washington. And the big difference was that Booker T. Washington founded a school, he founded the Tuskegee Institute. He pushed for people to individualize themselves and not marry themselves to the government, whereas you have W.B. Dubois over here as a socialist, as a communist, and his ideas today, we've seen what they've done in Nicaragua, we've seen what they've done to many Eastern European countries, we've seen what they've done to Venezuela, yet we have Booker T. Washington's ideals exemplified within Tuskegee University that still stands today. I mean, we have people who are around the country like Larry Elder, like Candace Owens, like Brandon Tatum, and they're, I mean, they're doing the work, they're getting people involved, and they're making people realize that individualism is what makes the country great, what makes people great, what makes communities great. Marrying yourself to the government is not the ideology that you want, and that's exactly what CRT is. I also think it's funny that you continue to say that it's not in the curriculum, yet I played the recording last meeting, and you say it's not in the curriculum. So what, the message that you're sending to the teachers that you employ is that if it's not in the curriculum and you teach it, we're not going to enforce any, we're not going to enforce what's in the Texas Education Code, we're not going to enforce what's in our curriculum. We don't care what's in our curriculum, you can teach anything you want, you can teach gender theory, you can teach pedophilia theory, you can teach whatever you want. So, and lastly, I just want to ask, where is the transparency? Where is the transparency with the budget? Where is the transparency with the curriculum? Where is the transparency with administrative personnel and who you hire, and who you let go, and who you fire? There's no transparency whatsoever. We need more than 14 slides when it comes to the budget. We need to know that, you guys realize that these are, these parents' kids who walk into these buildings, these are not your kids, and that is, that is the attitude that you had the whole 13 years that I was in these schools. And it needs to stick, it needs to change, it needs to stop, and you guys need to stand up for what you started on these school boards, and you need to remember why you started.
Okay, mine is pretty vanilla tonight. So, good evening, President Hubert, Dr. Noel, and members of the board. I'm here tonight to talk about dyslexia. Many CISD dyslexia families made numerous trips to Austin this past legislative session chasing the dream of HB 3880, the dyslexia bill that would have revolutionized the way the state identifies and serves struggling readers. We fell short of our goal, but are now pursuing a meaningful revision of the Dyslexia Handbook by the SBOE, which appears to be very possible. During the legislative process, we were joined by dyslexia families all across the state as our struggles in public education are all very similar. Indeed, the problem is systemic. We have decided to stick together going forward as our voices are stronger when unified. We are now known as the Texas Dyslexia Coalition. I would like to specifically thank trustee Scott Moore for not only following our efforts in the legislature and SBOE, but for also doing the hard work to help right the ship for our population. His testimony as a trustee of the 10th largest district of the state in favor of the proposed changes is nothing short of powerful. I also had the opportunity to talk with Dr. Noel about the journey. It was a true honor to sit with him and discuss our struggling readers. I also noticed that Dr. Audrey Young is in the house, and I want to thank her too as our SBOE representative. She's leading that effort in the SWE. Today, I would like to talk, today I was able to talk to Dr. Wiggins and Dr. Henry about upcoming changes to the way our population is identified and served. I was perhaps slightly internally emotional to hear them say that CISD is moving forward with the proposed changes to the handbook. This is such a big deal. CISD is truly setting themselves up to be forerunners in the way that we identify and serve struggling readers. Success is not an accident. It is intentional, and it requires courage to make changes. This dyslexia mom supports these changes wholeheartedly. I have been asked by our dyslexia group members to encourage good use of ESAR funds by campus principals for struggling readers that did not pass the STAR. Perhaps deeper individualized dyslexia intervention by a highly-trained campus dyslexia specialist is appropriate for our struggling readers. We hope principals can receive dyslexia information before deciding how to utilize the money for students that did not pass the reading and writing STAR. Thank you.
My name is Jonathan Houlihan. I grew up and graduated from high school in Montgomery County, Texas. I was asked by concerned parents and citizens of Montgomery County to speak here today. I'm a husband of 14 years, a father of three children, and a veteran of the wars in Afghanistan and Iraq. I've worked, I've worked on some of the most complex legal and policy issues this nation has faced, including analyzing operational legal authority for the President of the United States. Now, I'm a practicing attorney at a law firm in the Woodlands, and I'm on a legal team for one of the frontline MDs that has been in the battle lines of the COVID pandemic. She has saved thousands of American lives, largely with little or no help by unelected bureaucrats like Dr. Fauci. We currently live in a time where individual liberty feels as it's slipping away, and as an elected official, you must embrace and protect liberty. As you consider what a safe return to school looks like next year, the board must stand with liberty, parental rights, and reject tyranny in whatever form it may come. I can bear witness to what tyranny looks like in places outside of our republic. In many places, children have little or no chance to improve their lot in life. As Americans, we are different. Despite the scars in forming a more perfect union, throughout our history, we have rejected tyranny, stood with liberty, and respected the sovereignty of the individual. In your service today, you must embrace the American spirit and respect liberty of the individual by reminding yourselves that COVID injections are under the authority of an emergency use authorization. I'm sure your district legal team has informed you, but statements claiming this injection is still under emergency use is still safe and effective is prohibited. Pharmaceutical companies that manufacture emergency use vaccines are shielded from liability, public schools mandating them are not. I understand that you may have, you have not mandated the vaccine, but I would recommend training very carefully on this perception endorsement thereof, or leaving parents with the belief that a COVID injection is mandatory. This summer, a flyer advertised by the, partnered by, a flyer advertising the partnering of Conroe ISD with the Kelsey Siebo Clinic for the Pfizer vaccine advertised as nearly 100% effective certainly could leave a parent with the impression of a mandated injection, exposing Conroe CSD to great legal risk and liability. I admit, I'm a special pleader for liberty. As elected officials, you hold a position of special trust and confidence to protect the rights of individuals and respect a parent's decision for their children. Separate classrooms, vaccine passports, singling out and pressuring children does not respect the privacy of families or protect the liberty of families. We must not condition our children to blindly accept unconditional conformance. Rather, we must empower our children with the foundational principles of liberty and the power of critical thought. I promise you, if you don't, these people behind me will elect somebody else. And let me just finish with a quote from Ronald Reagan. Freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction. We did not pass it on to our children in the bloodstream. The only way they can inherit the freedom we know is to fight for it, protect it, and defend it.
Joe Lozetta.
I didn't catch the name.
Joe Lozetta.
Thank you. A Joe Lozetta citizen, concerned citizen for over 30 years, and I'm here to remind you all and those folks, great citizens behind me, that America is at war. It's a global covert and unconventional war, and the primary means of warfare are informational, cyber, and psychological, including the manufactured COVID-19 pandemic and the current, and the current push by the Biden regime and Big Pharma to inject every American with an experimental jab. I'm here to wave the caution flag in anticipation of a school-mask-and-vaccine conflict here in CISD in the fall. A giant chasm is formed in America. On one side lies an alliance of leftist interests comprised of corrupt politicians, mainstream media, teachers' unions, big tech oligarchs, lobbyist Anthony Fauci, and other public health bureaucrats in the CDC who can no longer be trusted. On the other side, there are millions of parents who are fed up with the unscientific and psychologically cruel restrictions upon children, along with a few medical experts, including Dr. Tom Reed. Thank you for coming, Dr. Tom, brave enough, brave enough to stand up for science and sanity and concerned constituents like myself and others who are here tonight. We are tired of the tyranny that has infiltrated corporations, hospitals, universities, colleges, and, yes, school boards. As a leadership coach, I urge you to exhibit discernment and boldness as you deliberate the return to school policies later this evening. If the best you can do is to blindly follow the CDC or other bureaucratic guidelines, that is followership, not leadership. We the people expect more. And my, my real concern is, I don't believe you've read the latest CDC guidelines that were released just last week. They are shocking, they are tyrannical. Read them, study them, and do not follow them. As a life coach, I remind you that life is full of risks. I also remind you that parents are primarily responsible for the health and welfare of their children, and that, and that includes the decision to wear useless masks or take an experimental and potentially dangerous COVID jab. I sometimes practice law without a license, and that's what I'm about to do. I encourage you to avoid the school-mask-and-vaccine conflict in the fall by putting this decision where it belongs, with the parents. Boldly declare that mask-wearing and COVID jabs are optional and at the discretion of parents. If you feel vulnerable, ask parents to sign a liability release form that a CISD attorney can develop with ease. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Madison. My son's name is Grayson, and I am here to be his voice. I want to talk about critical race theory. First, I want to say that it is vital our children know history and are informed of what took place in America, therefore it is not repeated. Although the notion that we need to tell them that racism, racism is ordinary and to be expected is unfair and damaging, children are not born racist, people are not born racist. Racism is learned. Children model behavior of the adults they are around. So maybe instead of spending money, training, and time on pounding this into our children, we should be looking at the adults. Secondly, I want to say that as a mother of a mixed child who has a white parent and a black parent, how do you expect him to receive and process this information? Because, because he is part black, that the playing field is now unleveled for him? That society and America will not accept him no matter the talents and abilities he possesses? Our children are already struggling at a younger age with self-confidence and identity crisis. We have seen a huge spike in depression, anxiety, and suicide, larger than ever before. I'm not denying that racism exists, but instead of brainwashing our children into thinking America is racist and that our whole system is built on white privilege, why don't we educate our children on how America is a multicultural nation, how we can appreciate and respect all the different races? Put the focus on, put the focus and the money on anti-bullying campaigns and trainings, classes, and no tolerance policies, not just for kids of different color, but for kids of different social classes, different sizes, disabilities, et cetera. I believe our resources can be used to educate. We all bring something different to the table. We were not created to be the same. Should everyone have the same rights? Absolutely. Should everyone be held accountable for their actions? Absolutely. Do we need to spend more in training our police officers on how to act under pressure and examine their mental health? Absolutely. But none of this needs to be put onto children who are just trying to learn and survive in a nation that is turning on each other for mistakes that were made by our ancestors that are no longer on this earth. We have progressed, we are moving forward, this nation does look different than it did 100 years ago. Progress is progress, and our past does not define our future. Thank you so much.
Of course, my phone is blowing up with announcements that I don't really care about, so I can get to my, what I've written. Hello, Dr. Noel and the board. My name is Ann Marie Kennedy. I'm here as a mother, and I care about the health and safety of students, and as I've said before, I want to keep the kids alive. While I am moved to come here because of the social media presence of sarcasm, satire, and saccharin to mock GLBT people done by a Conroe ISD board member, I'm here to ask for action from the board. I truly don't care what you do or don't do with him. I'm providing an invitation to the Conroe ISD board members and extend it to the principals, assistant principals, guidance counselors, and teachers to have a table and staff it with board members during the day of October 30th at the Town Green Park for the Woodlands Pride. With this table at the Woodlands Pride, there needs to be materials to show resources for GLBT students within the schools, which Conroe ISD provides, what services and resources, as well as community resources. You know, I'm all about keeping the kids alive. We need the students to stay connected. This pandemic has unfortunately left many of our students isolated and in hostile homes. Schools should be able to provide the resources for students about their health and safety. The schools need to have resources for students. All faculty and staff should know these resources and minimally know who the certain, or with certainty, who in their buildings to refer a student for resources. This is not about promoting anything other than student safety and keeping the kids alive. I'll be sending an invitation, so please look for it. I'll be sending an invitation, so please look for it. When Conro, where Conro ISD lacks information and resources, please let me know, because we'll be happy to provide that information to keep the kids alive.
Thank you.
Edgar Wingo.
I don't think that's asking too much. Keep them alive. Good evening. I currently live in the Woodlands, graduated from the Woodlands High, played varsity football there, and now have four kids in the Conro ISD. I'm told I was born on the same property when it was Conro Hospital. What has been exposed recently regarding what other districts have been doing and deliberately hiding it from parents destroys trust in every school. Critical race theory. Dividing our community on the basis of skin color and teaching our kids their race is the most important thing about them is racist. I oppose CRT or whatever euphemism it hides behind. There is no good kind of racism. Diversity, equity, inclusion is just an excuse to racially discriminate, just different names for the same objective, centralized government power. We do not need this here. This is evil thinking and un-American. We are in a fight for the soul of our country, and our kids are on the front lines. Leftists hate America, particularly our freedom and self-government. It is not patriotic to criticize the founding principles and documents of our country. It is not making a more perfect union. It is deranging our society, dividing us and turning us against each other. We are easier, easier to control that way. The Constitution and the Declaration of Independence are promissory notes for every American. They are not to be criticized in public schools. It is for our students to admire them, not diminish them. I now, I now have a trust problem with our public school system. Many teachers want to weaponize our history, so I support installing security cameras with audio in the classrooms focused on the teachers. I want to hear what they are teaching. Parents need to get more involved and fight this. Dear board members, review the teachers in your ranks. Root out any teachers that are committed to harming our kids through racist indoctrination, or the lawsuits are sure to come on the heels of CRT. Masks. There is strong evidence regarding carbon dioxide poisoning inhaled by kids with masks. This is also common sense. This school board abdicated to the CDC, an unelected political agency. This is a significant failure of leadership. Making my kids wear masks all day in class for over a year with no evidence to support the need was craven, extremely misguided, and wrong. BLM. BLM is a communist terrorist organization that doesn't deserve encouragement in our schools. They're trained Marxists who riot and loot, resulting in the collateral destruction of black communities. All Lives Matter is a good Christian statement. Anyone who says it's wrong is trying to divide us. We are not divided, we are united. This attempt to divide us must be fought and stopped. Support police and teach kids not to commit crimes and obey the law. They will have a much better life. Finally, for good teachers that would say I'm unfair in forgetting their good work, I say, if you are silent, if you do not speak up and join us in fighting against this divisive content, then you are also to blame. And this LGBT is also divisive. God bless.
Chris Vilaro.
Chris, you said?
I'd like to take time to thank the board for giving us this opportunity to talk. We're here to talk about dyslexia. The national average for students with dyslexia is 20%. The TEA shows in 2019 that Texas was at 5.8%. So, and then CISD, their latest number I found was 4.8%. So, goes to show that I don't know if the state is capping these, the amount of kids that are allowed to be dyslexic, or how you want to label these children. This is my daughter. She's a senior this year. She is dyslexic. I have a son who's dyslexic as well. He'd be going into fifth grade. She has a 504 for ADHD, was tested dyslexic by CISD, but is not on her 504. And the same with my son, was tested, he has an IEP for ADHD, was testing positive, was tested for dyslexia and is dyslexic, but that is not on his IEP either. So, question I have for y'all is, why the difference in numbers between the national average and the state average and CISD average? That's, that's, that's a lot of students that are falling through the cracks. And then also have accountability for these, for the teachers that don't follow the IEPs and the 504s. It seems like every year, we have to call the teachers, have to have a conference, have to figure out what's going on. They should know it's, it's written down exactly what their, what their things are, but it, but they never get followed. I have to call, we have to meet, we have to fight, and we have to tooth and nail to try to get them the accommodations that they deserve and that they need. So, and then also, the dyslexia program here stops at eighth grade. So, you're not, not dyslexic when you hit ninth grade. It doesn't go away. So, I want to know what type of resources are available for the, in the high school? The high school that we attend, Grand Oaks, the administration would not talk to us. I asked numerous times to, to meet and talk with Dr. Povich. She, he was her principal since seventh grade. He moved up to Grand Oaks when she moved up. He has refused to talk to us in like seven years. I've never talked to the man. I've numerous emails, numerous requests. He has assistant principal call me, and never, never have I talked to the person who is leading my daughter's education and has never talked to us. Is that CISD policy that the principal shuns parents and doesn't?
Understood.
So, uh, thank you for your time.
Mr. Laro, we'll have someone contact you.
Hi. Good evening, Dr. Knoll and the board. Just a little bit about myself really quickly. I'm a parent in CISD. I had a student that graduated from one of your high schools this year with STEM distinction. I have a daughter who is also in CISD, and my youngest son will be entering CISD next fall. So, I have a vested interest in the direction that this district takes. I do want to share with you as well that initially, when my family and I moved back to Texas, we moved to a different school district and elected to move our children to CISD because it offered more opportunities for academic success as well as extracurriculars. I was also very impressed with CISD's zero tolerance for bullying. And my son was, is very open with me and talked to me about his experience in the previous school district versus this one. And again, it was something that I was very happy to be a part of. So I'm sure all of you can imagine my dismay when I found out that one of the board members that sits among you tonight felt that it was okay to write things on social media that I would deem no less than bullying and ostracizing a particular group of students. So, rather than draw attention to that particular member tonight, I'm going to ask all of you to step up and follow your own no, non-bullying policy and stand up for the LGBTQ kids that are in this district. Because I can tell you, as a child myself who was picked on for various reasons, when you see the administration and teachers and board members make comments that are derogatory toward a group that you identify with, it, it demeans how you feel about yourself. It makes you feel like you're less, just like the leader of the pride group said earlier. So, because of the things that your other board member has said, I'm going to invite you, as many others have done here tonight, I'm asking you, each of you, to please step up and participate in a very big way in the Pride Woodlands on October 30th this year. Thank you.
Jenna Jakovic.
No? No? No Jenna Jakovic? We had a Jakovic.
Yes, it was a Madison Jakovic.
Madison, yeah.
John Boucher.
Boucher.
Thank you. First, I'd like to state clear for the record that Director Inman is a good friend of mine. I know him as a husband, a loving father, and a mighty man of God. And I've been in enough political scrapes with him to understand that people are very tolerant, as long as you agree with them. Thank you. You know, as a Christian conservative, you know, this isn't the first time he or I have been attacked out of love, but I want to be clear with you. I oppose any program or curriculum that excludes or singles out anybody or any group. And if there is such a program in CISD, I'd like to know about it. I don't think there is. But what I've also been around long enough to know is that for those demanding special treatment, equal treatment often feels like discrimination, and it's not. As to the CRT SEL discussion, any curriculum that seeks to infuse our classrooms with racial animus is just racism, plain and simple, and has no business in the classroom. Now, it's hard to overstate the impact that America's had on this world when those 13 colonies declared their independence from Great Britain back in 1776. And while people all across this planet are in the streets fighting and being murdered to try and get their God-given freedoms, they're waving and clutching American flags. And at the same time this is happening, we have teachers here in America telling our kids that America is systemically and institutionally racist, and that their life's path is predetermined by the color of their skin. This is wrong. It is antithetical to the American dream. We should be teaching our kids about why other nations look to America for hope, and millions and millions of people dream of coming here and are dying trying to get here. Understanding that is so much more important than using the classrooms across America to impose guilt on children for sins they never committed or making other children feel hatred towards people who never oppressed them. If we're going to continue to be a great nation, our children need to know that they live in the greatest country that has ever graced the face of this planet, and that the American dream is within their grasp. Critical race theory and other such curriculums, they try to destroy that, and they need to be thrown on the scrap heap of history with all the other socialist idea that have failed time and time again and cost millions upon millions of lives. The silent majority cannot continue to remain silent. I'm asking the board member to have the courage to defy the woke mob and condemn critical race theory in all of its forms and banish it from CISD, and we will stand with you. God bless you.
Vaccination is an invasive medical procedure that has never stood on its own merit, and with the course of time has proven increasingly dangerous. Children have always been harmed and even killed through the use of vaccines, yet it is hidden. Now, we have an injection that's not a vaccine, yet the manufacturers are allowed to call it a vaccine, injected into children with no animal studies, no follow-up, no tracking. The parents have no solid information, and therefore no informed consent. The Stool District has teamed up with the industry through Kelsey Siebel to push these injections on unsuspecting families. And I'm sorry, but I'm finding that suspicious. Informed consent means that you have all the known possible benefits and risks, but most importantly, and not just the ones that you want them to hear, but you must have the right to say no, and no coercion. The lack of informed consent in vaccination is nothing new. I wasn't allowed informed consent. The vaccine bans have been pulling up at the middle schools here, taking children from physical education classes and vaccinating them for years. Later, parents will receive letters from the nurses that half the school may be out as in sick, and given instructions on hand washing and told to keep the children home if sick. This continued behavior does not keep children safe. It does not help families. Actually, it's a violation of the Nuremberg Code, the Geneva Convention, and of course, our Constitution prohibits the non-consensual medical testing and treatment. It doesn't end there, though. Teachers are allowed to inject their beliefs of medical treatments and harass the children in class, lecturing on crazy anti-vaxers, raising their voices to students and telling them vaccines are safe, just get over it. And here's a favorite of mine. Honey, if your parents really cared about you, they'd vaccinate you. I would, we are a medical family who stopped vaccinating more than 18 years ago. I know. I would like to see a letter, a kind letter, to faculty and staff, letting them know that this is unacceptable behavior. There is nothing medicinal or therapeutic about these injections. The very people pushing them admit that they don't prevent COVID and to expect many more boosters ahead. Those same individuals are making money off of this. I'm going to end. I pray that you make the right decision for the families in the future. I pray those who are vaccinating will not choose to ignore what follows. We are the guinea pigs, and I'm afraid we have to take the data. I am a former researcher, and unbeknownst to me, I worked in bio-warfare. I'm going to add something, and this is in love, but if you do set up a table, I'd like to invite you, I think I can, if they don't mind, I'd like to invite you also set up and man a table at Montgomery County Eagle Forum, Montgomery County Tea Party. Any others? Some others? If we're going to start setting up tables places, then I think we're just going to have to get fair share everywhere. Thank you so much. I appreciate you for what you do.
Good evening, President Hubert and members of the school board and Dr. Knoll. I want to quickly say that I also oppose the teaching of CRT in our schools. However, I'm not here today to talk about, to discuss CRT, but to talk about again the racist and discriminatory actions of my son's teacher. For those of you who don't recall me or remember who I am, my name is Joe Liu. I am the gentleman that the person spoke to several speakers ago. I have appeared before the school board now for each of the past three months to address the issue of the racism and discrimination involving Conro ISD, and specifically the incident perpetrated against my son by his orchestra teacher at Collins Intermediate School, Ms. Lisa Gibbs. I've requested multiple times to meet with Ms. Gibbs, discuss her actions, but I've been refused each and every time. This obstruction by the school for just a simple request by me to meet with my son's teacher, which incidentally is guaranteed to me by both federal and state laws, suggests a cover-up or something that is equally nefarious. I admired Ms. Gibbs' father, who spoke earlier in her defense. However, if what he said was true, then why won't she meet with me and tell me that in person instead of hiding, hiding behind her father? I ask Ms. Gibbs again in front of all these witnesses, come meet with me, meet with me so we can discuss this issue. We'll resolve it then. However, I will keep my comments short today, as my son Andy has courageously volunteered to address you with his victim's impact statement, and I do not wish to divert any attention away from him. I did not ask or force him to speak before you today. He insisted that it was something that he himself had to do to protect other students in the future from suffering the same racism and discrimination that he did. But never fear, until I'm allowed to meet and speak with my teacher, which is my legal right, I'll be back each month to address the school board. I will see you all again in August. 剩下个couple of minutes, I just want to ref, one, the issues the gentleman said about the chairs. The chairs are not rotated. The violist and the cello is set in the same first chair the entire school year. You know what the odds of that happening are? It is one in one with 500 zeros after it. 500 zeros. There is no number that big. One billion has what, nine zeros? A million has six zeros? This is one with 500 zeros after it. That is the odds of my son not being first chair, but the other violist and the cello is being first chair through the entire school year. That's the odds. One within 500, one to 500 zeros. It's impossible. I mean, I wish that kind of odds play, I mean, two thousand and five hundred odds of that play in the lottery? It's impossible. So that is, that is not true. But again, I don't want, I don't want to take away from my sons, from my sons, I will now, thank you for your time, and now introduce my son, Andy Liu.
Andy Liu.
I would like to thank the school board and President Hubert for giving me the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Andy Liu, and I completed the sixth grade at Collins Intermediate School last, last semester. My name is Andy Liu, and I completed the sixth grade at Collins Intermediate School last semester. Last summer, I took lessons from a tutor, practiced constantly, and gave up a lot of playing time with my friends to become a better violinist. As a result of my hard work, I was selected to be the concert master of my school's orchestra. I felt proud and honored to be considered the best violinist in my school. I earned this position and was the concert master for the whole year until two days before the major concert of the year when my teacher, Ms. Alicia Gibbs, replaced me with a student of a different color. This student also had less playing ability as she was the 10th chair in the school orchestra. I couldn't believe she was able to jump nine chairs so quickly. Even Superman can only leap one tall building in a single bound. Also, this student not even bothered to try out for the Honor Orchestra. I was selected for the Honor Orchestra, which requires additional practices in the morning before the start of school. I was even chosen to play a solo part for the spring concert. I questioned my teacher, Ms. Gibbs, about it, and I felt that her answer was racist and discriminatory. I was mad and offended. This is why I decided to speak before you today to let you know about the racism and discrimination in our school district. However, I don't only blame the teacher, but also the school, the principal, and you, the entire school board, for doing nothing about the racism and discrimination in Conroe ISD. At first, I did not want to speak before you because I was scared and nervous, but I felt that it was important to tell you my story so other students in the future do not suffer the same experience that I did. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
David Burka.
Dr. Knoll, board members, thank you. I'll bet, as Joe alliterated to you, this nation is at war. And I'll bet you two years ago, none of you saw this coming. None. None of us. You did not sign up for this, I'm sure. Yet, we're here in this, like a chasm. And when wiser minds or stronger hearts know the way through, we're looking to you all for leadership to do the right thing. The right thing is not something that's mysterious or hidden or lost. It is before us, and it is very easy to perceive. When we look at the, for instance, two months ago, we had a track and field team. And they were rightly awarded, and their numbers were exemplary. They were leading in the state. They were even world-class. And they earned that. And they earned the respect of you all, the school district, and the students and teachers that were here. Now, let's extrapolate that a little further. If we academically pursued the same excellence with the same model, what would we be equipping our young people with? They would have an ability and a confidence and an understanding that would far surpass the model and the product that we are now currently bringing forward. So how do we differentiate between the good, the bad, and the ugly? Well, the ugly is easy to identify. When we have hatred, that's ugly. When we associate and embrace hatred, we are indeed infected with that same hatred. We may be innocent, but it's ours if we continue in that way. We're here in the community to come forward and to help you graduate past this chasm that you found yourself in, this landscape, this battlefield that you are currently attempting to go one way or the other, and to do the right thing. It is very easy to see. The citizens know the right way to go. Now, within your hearts, are you able to do the right thing? Because we can isolate you with the Marxists if you choose. We don't choose that. You will choose that, and we don't want that. So we will walk together, graduate from this mess, and be successful, especially for the students.
Evangeline Reed. Evangeline Reed. Okay. Kenneth Ernest.
Any relation?
I am.
All right.
Very proud. So, good evening. I'm Kenneth Ernest. I've lived in Montgomery County in the woodlands for over 16 years. During this time, my wife and I have paid a lot of taxes through all the properties that we own to the Conroe ISD. I've had two children attend schools in the Conroe ISD. However, one did have learning disabilities. You failed him. We had to put him in private school. We did have to pay for that separately. I do believe it gives me standing with Conroe ISD. All right, I believe there are two systemic issues within Conroe ISD. First, I believe the Conroe ISD administration has an arrogant attitude. When our kids enter our building, you think these are your kids, and you know what's best for them. You have the idea that we're the professionals. Parents should just be quiet. Teaching critical race theory, brain pop, social-emotional learning, and other antisocial racist wokeness as part of your curriculum does not match all. Bottom line, these are our kids, not yours. This is our money, not yours. And I know the Conroe ISD administrations, administration, or administrators have met with local state officials to discuss some of these controversial curriculum. I propose a meeting occurred with the senior leadership of the Conroe ISD and the public to discuss our curriculum and upcoming budget. And I want to add, the Texas Code of Education, Section 11.15.12B2, reads, "Collaboration between the board and superintendent." Section B, "The Board of Trustees and Superintendent shall work together to," and then subsection 2 says, "Create and support connections with the community, organizing to provide community-wide support for the high achievement of our district students." I asked a question. Who are you meeting with? None of us. I happen to be a member of the Republican Party, and I'm on the education committee. That went quick. I would welcome some meeting time.
Very good. Thank you.
Garrett Costello.
Good evening. Thanks to the board for hearing my comments. It's my first board meeting.
You're welcome.
My name is Garrett Costello, and I'm a parent of three Conroe ISD children. I came to this board meeting today because I am very disturbed about the possibility of my children's school partnering with the Kelsey Siebold Clinic to encourage COVID-19 vaccinations in schoolchildren. The sole purpose of the public school system in Texas is to educate each child, regardless of the child's race, religion, or economic background. The purpose of the public school system is not to recommend medical procedures for my child or anyone else's. My children's healthcare decisions are a personal matter and solely between me and their physician. I find it very disturbing that a public school entity comprised of educators would be attempting to wedge themselves between me and my child's physician and recommended medical treatment. I'm here to request the school board focus on these educational issues facing our students, not recommended medical treatments or partner with any medical or pharmaceutical entities who are recommending a vaccine that has not been safety-tested long-term. I am reminded of the multiple vaccines that have gained full FDA approval that were then recalled and reformulated years later after adverse effects were found. Examples include smallpox, live polio vaccine, wholesale pertussis vaccine, all mercury-containing vaccines, to name a few. The COVID-19 vaccine hasn't gained full FDA approval, as we know, let alone had years of trials to fully evaluate it. Our children are not an experiment, and the purpose of the school board is to educate the children, not partner with medical entities to recommend experimental treatments.
Thank you very much. Thanks for everybody who showed up and voiced their opinion and their concerns. We appreciate that. We're going to take a short break. The time is eight o'clock.
We are, we're getting going. Hang around, I'll talk.
All right. Thank you for all those. I'd like to go ahead and get the meeting going again. The time is now eight eleven. Moving on to item four, it's the consent agenda. Do we have anybody?
Mr. President, I move approval consent agenda as presented.
All right, it's, I would, I'll call the vote. Any discussion, my discussion would be, do you have any discussion? My discussion is I'd like for us to remove the amendment of the 2020-2021 budget, that item from the, from the agenda.
I will amend my motion to remove item B.
Do I have a second to the amendment?
Second.
All right. Discussion, yes, sir. I, the reason I'd like for us to remove that is, I'd like for us to talk about that and vote on that particular item specifically because it's an amendment to our budget. So, it's a, it's a small amendment, I understand. It's a small amendment to our budget, but I think it's important for us to bring that out in public and talk about that as this, as an individual item.
Okay.
All right, all of those in favor?
I'm, I'm sorry, I was outside, so I didn't get to hear everything that was said. I apologize.
No problem, I'll, I'll help you. We're on the consent agenda.
Yes.
And I've asked to move item B from the consent agenda, and that's what we're voting on at this time.
Okay, all right.
The discussion was one.
Yeah, we were talking about why, why I wanted to move it.
I heard that part of it.
Okay.
Thank you, I just didn't hear the beginning.
All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Very good. I'll call item four B, amendment to the 2020-2021 budget. All right, Mr. Rice?
Yes, good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll. It is my pleasure this evening to recommend the Board of Trustees adopt the budget amendment for July 20th, 2021. This budget amendment for the month of July totals $12,104,426 in revenues and the same number in appropriations. The budget amendment is broken down into two categories, one for the general fund and then one for all other funds. The budget amendment in the general fund for the month of July includes activity fund donations that total $1,000, and the budget amendment for all other funds of $12,103,426 includes amounts for newer revised state and federal and local grant allocations. At this time, I recommend your approval.
We have a motion?
Second.
A second, any other conversation? I appreciate you bringing that out, I just wanted to make sure that we were aware that this is really a formality. It's a thousand dollars that was donated in and we have to show the money coming in and then money going, it's not a major adjustment, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, any other conversation? All those in favor? Lift a hand, any opposed by the same sign? Very good, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Rice. Now, do we, we need to vote on the consent agenda?
You did.
We already did. Very good, thanks for keeping me in line. Okay, item five, receive update regarding the safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of service plan.
All right, Dr. Hines and Mr. McCord to come forward.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, Dr. Knoll. Just a quick reminder, I know in May and June, we made some presentations regarding our ESER grant and the ESER application, which were the funds that were related to responding to COVID-19 pandemic and the resulting student learning loss. And now, part of, as part of that grant application process to access these federal funds, the district must develop in post its safe return to instruction and continuity of services plan on the district website. And so, we've been working on that, we actually had a really kind of test, did a test run through summer school this year, and we seem to have pretty good results. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Chris McCord, our Assistant Superintendent of Operations, who briefly going to show you the highlights.
Good evening, Sarah.
Get the clicker in front of you.
No.
There you go.
First off, the presentation tonight is given based on the information we have as of today, so as of the evening of July 20th. So, the guidance, what has worked for us for most of our lives as far as mitigating illnesses, still works today. And I want to note that it's going to take all of us working together to successfully navigate the remaining days of COVID-19. The best way to prevent the spread of illness is the same as it was when we were children, and it is to stay home when you're ill. You know, we ask parents to consider not sending their children to school if they have a fever of 100 degrees or higher or higher, or have new symptoms of an illness of any time. We will continue to emphasize washing hands, and I believe that washing hands has made a difference, and has made a difference maybe not just in COVID-19, but some of the other illnesses that normally schoolchildren and adults have. I will direct your attention to a memorandum from June 5th from TEA. If you look at it, just the things to bring out that are important in this particular document is that we are required to report cases of confirmed COVID-19 to our local health departments and to the State Department of Health Services. It's also important to note at the bottom, per GA 36, the school system such as us cannot require students or staff to wear a mask. It is not permissible at this time. The delivery of instruction for this year is scheduled to be 100% in-person. We are proud ourselves on having among the highest, if not the highest percentage of in-person instruction last year. It took a lot of people working together, including the support of our school board. That is the method of delivery of instruction at this time for 2021, 2022. I want to take a special moment to recognize the group of people that helped us accomplish some tasks and address some challenges that had not, never been faced by humanity, or it had been a very long time since it had been faced. And there's a large group of people, you'll see some names you know, some of you may be on this list, but if you haven't been thanked, I want to take a moment tonight to do a special note of thanks to you. We've worked on this group for months. Without this group, we could not have accomplished what we've done last year. We talked a lot about last year, and really tonight, we're here to focus largely on the upcoming year, in being the best we can for the students and children of our district going forward. So, you can see a lot of names and a lot of people contributed, thank you for their time. So, going forward, it'll be a lot of personal responsibility, people taking personal responsibility for their health and the health of others around them. So, that is important, that has been articulated to principles, we had a principals' meeting last week, I've articulated it, and we will continue to communicate the principles and to make sure that personal responsibility is near or at the top of the list. So, just a few, a couple of specific things that could come up. If an individual does test positive for COVID-19, they have tested positive, that individual should isolate for 10 days. They should be fever-free for 24 hours before returning to work or school without fever-reducing medications. Should be diarrhea-free for 24 hours, and note that students should notify the school nurse, and as we talked about earlier, employers, to mention, employees should report in the SSO portal as they have this summer where it's worked so successfully. If you have symptoms consistent with COVID-19, but you have not tested positive, you should consider isolating. You should seek medical guidance as you would at any time if you have an illness.
Can you go back a slide for me, please?
Yes.
Repeat number one for me.
Should, should isolate for 10 days after the date of symptom onset or test date if asymptomatic, as recommended by the CDC.
So, if the kid tests positive, this is what they should do?
It's what they should do, yes, sir.
So, if a kid tests positive, he can show up at school next day?
If they test positive, they should take care of their health and follow health guidance.
You didn't answer my question.
We are not at this time going to absolutely positively prohibit them from coming to school, but they should, they should take personal responsibility, as we mentioned a couple of slides earlier, and hopefully themselves and their parents will make a decision to stay home if they're sick of COVID.
Under what criteria is a kid mandated to stay home?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Under what criteria of sickness is a kid mandated to stay home?
If they have 100-degree fever or higher, they can be mandated to stay home, according to rules that existed prior to COVID-19.
Kid shows up with chicken pox?
Yes, sir.
Can't even come to school?
There's a list of, there's a, there is a list of CDC excluded illnesses that would require, as of now, COVID-19 is not on that list.
What did the parents relative to the classroom, how are we informing them, what's the protocol there?
Right now, in, in 2020, 2021, we had a system of notifications, we had a system that we devised. It had worked out, it was proprietary, we made it, it worked successfully. As of now, notifications would be through our website. We are poised and considered and are ready, if necessary, if COVID-19 changes or evolves to a net that we can reinstitute that system and notify by classrooms, campuses, whatever we need to do.
You notified last year that a kid was in contact with a kid that was potentially tested positive, but it was an understood from the parent's standpoint that that kid was no longer in the classroom, right? This time, you're saying that, because you're not going to say specifically who the kid is, which is understood, I understand the laws related to that, but you are saying a kid tested positive, this time for CDC, for COVID, but you're not saying that kid is not, no longer in the classroom, you're just informing the parents that that kid tested positive, correct?
We, we could do that, yes, sir, we can do that, through our notification system.
What impact do we think that's going to have on those parents in their classroom?
Our hope is that people use personal responsibility and to do what's right.
But, to answer your question, it's causing a lot of concern. My email and phone has been blown up for the last week with a lot of concern from parents on that. It's, the reality is, we can only act in the way in which we have authority to act. So, that's, it's going, it's going to be a trust issue, and it's going to require, this is the reality, is it's going to require everyone to do their part, and if they don't, it won't work and our schools won't stay open. I mean, that's the, I mean, that's the bottom line, but that's, you know, we heard a lot of people wanting personal liberty, but we're going to give, we're going to have a lot of personal liberty, but if it's not taken seriously.
I want personal liberty too, but I got three kids in there, and I got my wife in there, and my expectation is that if a kid is infected, I don't want my kids infected in that classroom as well.
Kids during that 10 days, because my understanding is, the online option is gone. It's, it's gone, so there is no online option. So, how are we, is a, is a teacher notified of the student to work with them, or I mean, how, how far does that go? How do they, how do they teach them?
It's going to be like every absence, like every other absence that, that you would have, you're going to be, you know, providing work to the student, the teachers will be trying to provide work to the student like, like any other absence, but it won't, we just don't have that flip-the-switch mechanism to go to online, because that's been taken away.
I think, I think we're a little naive, we're expecting the kids to be responsible in relative to an illness, you know?
And, Mr. Hubert?
I would argue it's not naivete, it's, we can, we can only do what we can do. We are going to act in every way that we are capable of acting. I think it is the policies that are in place that we're expected to follow.
I understand, I understand, your hands are tied, I understand, but these are my concerns as a parent, I just a board member, so I get it.
Understood.
Let's move on.
And, Mr. Hubert, to answer your question, as a building principal, what you illustrated as far as being out, that happens a lot, and teachers go to a lot of effort to prepare those for children, because people are out for a myriad of reasons. Sure. So, yeah, there's no reason that will not continue.
I just want to make sure that was, that's all, I mean, I know kids get the flu, so they're out, so this is, this is a variation of the flu, so it can certainly be treated the same way, I just wanted to make sure that, that, that there's not a waiver, you know what I mean? Like, I, I want to make sure these kids, if they, if they come down with this, that they're not being waived from their responsibilities, that they're, they're still going to be responsible for the work, and that we as a school board and the teachers are still going to be responsible to make sure those kids are taught, that they're not, they're isolated from the classroom, but they're not isolated from the learning.
Yes, sir.
But it will not be like it was last year where there's an online class to log into, maybe involved in class, that's, that will not exist.
So, talking about individuals who have symptoms consistent, they should consider isolating, medical guidance, testing, I'll talk about testing momentarily, they should consider, it's not required, but should consider wearing a face mask, you know, wearing a mask or face covering if possible. So, employees, we're relying on their employees' best judgment, nurses, you know, I can't say enough positives about school nurses. They're a real important key cog in this, and we give them a lot of kudos, but we, we could be here all night and not give them enough kudos for what they do. They really look out for the child, the school, and appreciate them, and so that's important to note also. It is important to reiterate, although the governor's statement made it not possible to wear masks and face coverings, no employee or student or visitor is required to wear a mask or face covering, but they are very much allowed to do so if they choose. So, ConRochd will continue to provide PPE as appropriate to the task for all employees by request. We have a dashboard on our website, it's excellent. That dashboard will continue, it's on the dashboard now, you can see it. If we need to take additional notifications, depending on how COVID-19 trends, as I'd mentioned earlier, we are prepared to do so and will make it happen. COVID testing remains, is, remains an option. Thank you to our nurses, thank you to our CISD Police Command, specifically Chief Harness and Captain Blakelock, but testing will resume prior to the start of school and is scheduled to continue at least through October. At this time, we have plenty of tests, we have over 5,000 tests, and they are dated to last through October 1st at this time. So, we'll continue to allow testing for students or staff through October 1st. We have a great group, we made it mobilized, unbelievable response for cleaning and sanitizing. I want people to understand that we'll continue e-misting in common areas, classrooms and other specific spaces can be e-misted upon request. Cleaning protocols may change, depending on what happens. Hand sanitizer will continue to be available in the buildings and on buses for everybody. Employees are encouraged to wash and sanitize their hands, and students will be encouraged to, and given opportunities, and I will make sure it happens throughout the day to wash and sanitize their hands. So, we have PPE, we have an abundance of PPE available, campuses have funds to purchase PPE as necessary, clinics have what they need, and we'll make sure it happens, we will not let you down. This is our website, which we know well, if you go to the roadmap to reopening, roadmap to remaining open on the right, you see it in the blue, much more information is there, and you can go through a few more details and iterations of what we discussed, and I appreciate the Communications Department, Barbara Robertson, and Dr. Hines for keeping that updated. So, I appreciate you giving me a few moments to discuss this before we return to school for 2122. Thank you so much.
Any questions?
And we will continue to adjust this based on the current situation, like, so when this was built three weeks ago, since then, like, hospitalization rates in the last two weeks have gone up 1,000% in Montgomery County. Like, it's, you know, speaking of Memorial Hermann, they went from four hospitalizations to 40 in a week. So, the situation has changed dramatically, and just, we, if we're still in that situation in August, then we will be, you know, more robust in our, in what we're doing, than from notifications to the cleaning practices to limitations that we, that we might put on for guests or different things as far as, you know, people in the buildings. If, if we can get back to where we were in the beginning of summer, then we'll, we'll go back to the, you know, we'll, we're ready to scale it as needed. But right now, it's becoming more concerning, certainly.
Yeah. Mr. Chase?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chase. Go ahead.
I don't really have a question, just maybe a comment. As a parent, I mean, it's pretty concerning, right? And I have also had other parents voice their concerns to me as well, just like you pointed out, the, the rising number of cases locally, and, yeah, just a general sense of unease about what's going to happen. So, I, I appreciate us treating it like the moving topic it is, and as new data and new information comes to light, we evaluate and respond accordingly.
Mr. Smith, before I had a question, I saw in there, it said that, talking about visitors, so is the plan to kind of return back to pre-COVID conditions where we're allowing visitors into the school, if parents want to have lunch with their children, or if they want to come in, someone, and read to a class or things such as that?
As of this moment on July 20th, yes, but obviously, it's very much such a change.
Absolutely, I understand, but I was just wanting to understand if that's the case.
And we would be elated if circumstances continue that we would be able to do that. And these, really, the protocols you've seen have worked fabulously throughout summer school, but, you know, we keep, we read the papers, we stay updated, you know, things change, and as things change, we'll change. You know, things change, and as things change, we'll change, under your guidance and leadership.
That's a good point. Can you speak a little bit about how successful it's been through summer school, or?
We had, we had a surprisingly few number of cases, and it, it works very successfully. And I don't have the exact data, Barbara or Dr. Hines may have the exact data, but it, it really has worked well. The real wild card here, and I'm not an epidemiologist, I did teach biology. But the, the real wild card, I think, is the Delta variant, it really is. And so, that's what we'll continue to track and follow. Barbara, you have any comments, thoughts?
Summer school went very well. We had one student positive and two employees who saw no spread. We also saw very limited mass use. Nurses did well, really had a very uneventful summer school for over five thousand students.
Awesome. We're hoping that trend continues, but we'll adjust as needed. Good questions, thank you.
So, my question is, how do we treat those ones that were infected in summer school?
If, if they?
They chose to stay home, teachers too?
Yes.
Okay. I think we just need to make sure we keep an eye on our, our, our teachers and educators. Because if we lose a few of those, we can look forward to halting school for some time.
Yes, sir, no doubt.
So, as long as we're aware of that and we understand the risk associated with it, I'm sure you guys have taken that into account, so that's all I have.
Mr. Hammond, do you have anything?
No, sir.
I just have a couple of questions, because as, as we're all aware, we had a lot of people commenting on this particular pro-, opt-, um, topic. And it's not often that it's actually on the agenda that we get to talk about. So, could you go back to the slide that says that we're going to segregate kids if they get COVID? There's no slide for that, right?
You're being sarcastic, I'm sorry.
I am. Or, or go back to the slide that says that they have to get vaccinated to be able to come to school?
Mr. Hubert, there is no slide that says that, sir.
We're not doing that, right?
Affirmative, that is correct, we are not.
So, you said there, there are several liberties that they can, we're encouraging people to take upon themselves to treat this as they choose, correct? And we're not mandating any, anything, so, because I just wanna make sure the safe return, we're not mandating that they, anybody has to wear a mask, that anybody has to miss school, you don't have to get a vaccine, and we're not gonna segregate kids and we're not gonna ask those questions?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Any, any other thoughts or questions?
Okay, I, I wanna commend our board for sitting up here and allowing people to speak their mind, and then allowing us to have this conversation to clear up any kind of thoughts out there.
Understood, thanks, sir.
I, I would also just share at the same time, like, we would, because we have tests available and we inform people that tests are available, that does not mean that we are forcing you to go get tested in the same vein of, because vacs, we say that there are vaccines at a clinic, it's not our recommendation for you to go get it. But we had a lot of parents asking us for resources. So, we make that available to say, here it is, if you want it, go, if you don't, don't.
Right.
It's not, not our, not our deal. So, you know, we, we, like, we do in many other resources, we make a lot of things available to parents and what they choose to utilize is their choice.
And I personally commend the school for doing that, just getting the information out and allowing people to make their own decisions. It wasn't a recommendation on our part, on your part, on the school's board's part to, to, to take advantage of it. We were just saying, here's the information, do with it what you will.
I, I personally think you'd be derelict in your duties as educators of the school district not to inform parents that this is available. I personally, as a parent of three in CISD, so I do send my kids to school every day, and I send my wife to school every day for the last twenty years, it was much appreciated. So, I wanted to say thank you from a parent that's very concerned with what's going on and very much so took advantage of that information, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, item, item six A, consider approval of House Bill Three implementation, early childhood and college and career and military readiness, CCMR, board adoption, adopted plans and goals. All right, I have Dr. Upshaw and Mr. Coulson.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, Dr. Knoll. Thank you for, so much for giving us your time today. We came, and able to talk to you a little bit about some information to be able to propose some board adopted goals in three particular areas. So, the state requires us to adopt detailed plans for these areas, early childhood literacy, early childhood math, and college career military readiness. Mr. Coulson and I would like to give a thank you to our staff that helps us behind the scenes and helps us prepare this information. People on our staff that assist us are Dr. Sharon Henry, she's our coordinator of dyslexia, Mark Smith, our coordinator of English Language Arts, Tammy Zunker, our coordinator of math and early childhood, they're not here tonight. But with us tonight is Tally Stout, our director of career technol-, CTE, Laura Willard, our college readiness specialist, and then Dana Boyer, our coordinator of assessment. So, looking at these plans and components, for early childhood literacy and math, we're really looking at the performance of reading star and math star. But we all know that best practices don't happen in third grade, right? That's that end goal, it's really looking at grades pre-K through two.
When we talked in April, we, we did a brief reminder of what college career military readiness is. And House Bill Three asks us to address each. And if you remember, the state has established a goal for the year twenty thirty that sixty percent of our students by the time that they graduate will have achieved either be college-ready, career-ready, or military-ready. There, there's a reminder of how you can be college-ready, one of the standardized tests, it's academic proficiency-driven. Career-ready by passing an industry-based certification, or military-ready, which is actually enlisting in the armed forces and attending boot camp.
So, when we look at these goals, they're specific, and they each contain a baseline. We're then looking at that baseline and targeting that goal for the next five years, right? So, the, here's an example that we wanted to make sure that we pointed out to you, is that there are three ways that the state looks at star performance. It is the approaches level, which is really where the state says they have some understanding of the material, and that considers passing at the state. Then it's at the meets level, which shows the student that they have an understanding of the material and that they're on grade level. And then the masters level, so that on-grade level and above. So, when we're looking at these third-grade reading and math goals, we wanna point out that as CISD, our goals are not based on the state passing rate, we're being very ambitious here, and we're putting them based on the meet. So, when you see something like a fifty-two to a fifty-six, we wanna just remind you that we're going above that state passing goal. So, each one of these, we have a goal, but in order to get there, you have to have progress measures, steps in place that we bring forward that are strategies to make the goal successful. So, here's a sample of our goal number one, and it's the third-grade reading goal. So, looking at that meets level, that is currently seventy-four percent passing at reading in third grade on that star, we wanna move from fifty-two percent to fifty-six percent in five years. So, in order to get there, we have six progress measures. So, these progress measures are like learning your letter sounds and letter ID, and also looking at your reading levels in kinder all the way to second grade. So, what are those reading levels direct throughout the, the year? So, we're preparing and looking at grade levels specifically through these times to get ready for that third-grade star. The next goal, goal number two, looks at math, which is seventy-five percent is that meets level, and we're looking at increasing from fifty-one percent to fifty-five percent in five years. And in order to get there, we're looking at numeracy, right? And we're also looking at counting sets. So, basically, the number five is made up of two plus three, four plus one, so on and so forth. And we measure that in different grade levels, and that's called numeracy. And those are those progress measures to help us with our goal number two.
Again, goal three is college career military readiness. And our goal is, over the next five years, to increase students graduating, which is currently at sixty-three percent to seventy-six percent. And to do that, we're also trying to close the gaps with, with some of our sub-populations. In the state accountability system, a score of sixty or sixty percent is equivalent to an A. So, our minimum goal for each one of our groups is to get to sixty percent by the year twenty twenty-five. We have three progress measures that we're going to focus on. One has to do with assessment, increasing the number of students who can pass the TSI. The second one is to increase the number of industry-based certifications. And the third one is to make sure more of our economically disadvantaged graduates meet CCMR. We've established some deadlines, some dates that we will report back to you with updates on information. A lot of it is based on what, what times of the year we get information back from the state so that we can report it to you accurately. Again, just a reminder, our three goals are early literacy, early math, and CCMR. If there are any questions, we will entertain those, otherwise, we would ask for your approval of our House Bill Three goals.
Mr. Coulson, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I know that each one of our high schools, we have a junior ROTC program. And I'm very proud of that, that we, that, not all high, it's, it's a program that costs our district. And I'm glad that we offer that. What I was wanting to know, though, is, have we ever tracked how many of those ROTC students actually follow up and either go into a college ROTC program and ultimately enroll into the military or go directly out of high school? I know we crack how many enroll in, in the military out of high school, but I, I'm, I'm asking specifically, were they in ROTC or were they not in ROTC? And I know there's a mix.
Campuses will have that information, I don't have that really available, we can certainly get that for you.
I'm just thinking out loud, because I, I'm trying to think, what can you do to raise the, the military readiness? I, I get college and career, and I, I get the certifications with our, our vast CTE classes. There's opportunities for students to get all kinds of different certifications, which I'm very proud of as well. I'm just thinking about the career piece, or, or, I'm sorry, the military piece for the, as a career. Because I believe that it is a good, good way for, for people to move directly out of high school into a, a working career that can last them a lifetime. I just didn't know, I just, when we were talking about goals and we were talking about kinda key performance indicators, I just, I was, I'm just thinking out loud, so I'm sorry.
May I get that information?
It's an interesting question of just our kids that do go to the military, what percentage were in JROTC? I don't know the answer, I'm just curious.
I, I think that's a good curiosity. I'm just trying to think through, because, you know, I, I'm sure they're in JROTC for a reason. It may not always be to go into the military, but.
And actually, as a principal at a former, at a former school that had a JRTC unit, the selling point on getting kids into the program was not preparing them for the military.
Correct.
And end product of it many times was those kids had a great experience and would go into the college version of ROTC. And some went on to Officer Candidate School, and while others just went on with life.
Well, and I know, like, at the Woodlands High School, they could go on to be pilots, whether they join the Air Force or not, join the Air Force, absolutely.
I, I'd like to add to that as well, because that's my question, is when do they start measuring and asking those questions? Is it, as you just touched on, there may be kids that are in the ROTC that go off to a college that has a military, that they served for two years and then enlist and go on. Are those, are those students counted as going off to the military?
No, they're not, is the answer.
Yeah, but they would already count for college-ready.
They would count for college-ready because they've gone to college.
They, they would've gotten their point on the college-ready piece.
But his, his point is, they may have gone to military first, got the money to go to college and then went on to college.
You can only get one point.
Yeah.
I mean, you can, you can knock SAT out of the box, get a point there. You can pass multiple industry-based certifications and go into the military, you're only gonna earn one.
I got you.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts?
The only other question I had for Dr. Upshaw was regarding, I, I get everything you're talking about from K, pre-K through two. I presume that the goals that you're talking about, even though there's not a star test, that we will be using many, many different levels of kind of grading to go through and identify those students that may be behind in reading, say specifically, or something along those lines?
Absolutely, we have something called the VAS, which is a reading assessment we do three times a year. And that really measures that progress of that child as a reader. Nothing is more thorough than sitting down with a reader and seeing if it's a fluency issue, a comprehension issue, or a word study issue. So, it's looking at that identification, so, because the child gets to third grade and needs to learn how to comprehend. If he can't define economic awareness, or letter ID, or be fluent, it doesn't, he can't access tech, the text in third grade. So, it really is tracking, if they're behind in first grade reading, we have to address that. We can't come into third grade a year behind on reading.
Absolutely.
So, it starts when they're little.
Okay.
Thank you, sir, for asking.
Do we have a motion?
I still move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Right, motion a second. Is there any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed by the same sign? Very good, passes, thank you very much. Item six B, receive information regarding twenty twenty-one preliminary STAR three eight and EOC results.
All right, I know our assistant superintendents are pleased to discuss the hard work of our students and teachers, so, Dr. Winkler, Dr. Medford, and Mr. Coulson.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll. This evening, we are excited to bring to you our preliminary two thousand twenty-one STAR assessment scores. TEA will have the final scores in August, and those scores will be presented to you again in the fall. We are very proud of our students and our teachers this year. As we have said many times, this has been a tough year for teachers, staff, and community members. But they've remained focused on our students, on mitigation factors, not only to keep our schools open, but to keep our students engaged. Realistically, we knew that students would have learning gaps this year due to COVID-19, but we're excited to report gains in some areas, which Mr. Coulson will highlight for the end-of-course exams. And we're also pleased to see that we did not, we did not have the significant decreases that the state saw in their STAR scores, their preliminary STAR scores. These STAR scores, coupled with our local assessments, help us each year to gauge where we need to continue our work as a district and to assist us in identifying areas in which students can receive targeted areas of intervention. This is especially important going into this year so that we can develop effective plans for each of our struggling students. So, this evening, we're gonna start by sharing with you this preliminary data. We're gonna show you the state and the district as well. And for context, we're gonna include two thousand nineteen, of course, two thousand twenty, we did not take a test, but we wanted to offer this to you for context for this evening. We also wanted to share with you how many tests were given. In Connor ISD, this year, we gave a little over a hundred thousand tests, which was about a three thousand, two thousand decrease about, in tests. And the state, it was about one point one million decrease in the number of tests. So, that was about a two percent decrease for us and almost a thirteen percent decrease at the state level. So, those were students that did not take it, well, they were tests that were not given to students. At the elementary level, here are our third-grade scores for both reading and for math. So, you'll see a little bit, a bit change. And here are fourth-grade reading and math scores, both for the state and for the district for both years. And our fourth-grade writing scores for last year. And I'll hand it over to Dr. Medford, and she's going to go over our middle school scores.
See, I understand.
Good evening. You will see the same kind of trend for our middle schools as you did our elementary schools. So, in fifth grade, our students take three tests. So, here are our scores for reading and math in the comparison of the two years. And then in fifth grade, it's their first year that they take science, and so here are science scores. And then in sixth grade, it's just two assessments, reading and math. And then we jump to our junior highs. Seventh grade, we have three tests again, and here's reading and math.
Dr. Medford, can you?
Of course.
These aren't fun to look at, right?
Right.
So, how would you guys translate these numbers? How, how would you, how can you translate these numbers to?
To teachers and students, the, the biggest thing we look at is that comparison, right? Like, how did we do, how, how much did we decrease compared to the state? And we've spent our summer planning for that, right? Like, looking at each kid individually and what do they need for this upcoming year. And so, we obviously utilized summer school, we had the highest number we've had in a while. Dr. Winkler and I would think would have those exact numbers, a little over five thousand kids that we were able to serve this summer. So, we utilized that and really pushed even before we had this information. And then really looking at moving forward for what our kids need as we, as we close those gaps. And there's some, in some areas, we're excited, you know, to some that we were able to stay the same and they've been at home for a long time, but just being really prescriptive and looking forward.
So, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we started the year, it was optional to, to, to stay at home. And then, I believe I remember that if a student's grade was at a certain level, then it was maybe not required, but suggested that they come in. Was that, is that weighed in here at all? I mean, are they? is that weighed in here at all? I mean, are they, were some of these tests taken in the first semester versus?
All of the elementary, all of these, this group was taken in May.
Taken in May.
Mm-hmm. And so, we, we did have those conversations individually with parents, the kiddos that we could get back, who we felt like it was better. We did have those conversations. Principals did that one-on-one, and we were able to get back a large number of kids, as you saw in the numbers that we had in person. But, you know, we did have some kids that opted not to come in to take it for, for whatever reason, but that number is significantly lower than we, we've seen across the state. So, we are excited about that. It's one of the things that, we don't like the dip in scores, but we do like the fact that we have scores, right? And we know where most of our kids are so that we can make a plan. So, you know, we kind of weigh that out when we look at them.
That's, I think that's the most significant number of all these, was the first slide, the number of kids we tested, because the, you know, just statistically speaking, you would expect when you test more kids that you're going to have lower scores, right? It's the districts that excluded kids that were home and never showed up to test, those were kids that probably weren't going to pass. So, if they would have all tested, the state would have dipped even further. So, the fact that we tested a higher percentage and didn't dip as much as the state shows really strong success. But, to Dr. Medford's point, the, the real point here is each individual child. And having that test data, we're going to go into the year next year with a plan in place on day one, where if we had not tested a large percentage of these kids, we'd spend the first six weeks trying to figure out where they were and then start trying to catch up. We're going to be able to start that from day one, which is really a big deal. And I think we all can understand, they would be behind based on the last year and a half of their, their instruction. It, it didn't match two years ago's instruction. But, to know where we are gives us a, a nice path, like.
So, has there been any, any data collected or studies to address, we know there's a dip, but how long it will take to get back up? Like, how long, how long will it take? I don't know how to properly say that. So, somebody help me out.
I mean, I think that's a, future dissertations are going to be written about that for years. But I don't think we know, because we've never had this disruption before. Like, this is the first time we've seen it. So, I do think what we did last year puts us ahead of that curve a little bit, you know, especially considered nationwide for places that maybe never got to in-person school last year at all. They're really going to be digging. And, you know, you see it in places of complexity, like, you know, we seventh grade math, here's the one that's the biggest challenge, it's a very complex subject. It's what we all took as algebra back in our day. It's now in seventh grade, it's, you know, in sixth grade math, very foundational, that last half. So, it's understanding, like, we can understand why here. But that allows us then to spiral in those things into our eighth grade curriculum so that we're ready to support these kids.
Well, we, we can't look at it as if those kids are behind. It depends on what's the baseline. I mean, nationwide, we're all behind. So, the expectation is for us to, like you said, adapt, adjust, and kind of get back on track as quick as we possibly can. So, everybody's on equal playing field, I guess.
Right. And I think we might be a little ahead, which is good.
Me too.
Exactly.
Mr. Sanders, I will say, there was a, there was a study done based on the hurricane impact and regression in time it took in the summer. I don't remember all of it, but I knew math is one of the things they learned that took a longer recovery. It's not the same as this pandemic, but it was a similar kind of a, kids were out of school in a, I can't remember where, Boomer, or whoever, for a month or so, and it took a long, no, it takes more than one year to catch up.
And there's additional funding and mandates coming down regarding tutoring and things like that, specifically to address these issues.
Correct. Every kid will have a, a plan, will be in place. And, and we, we do that anyway, but we've got some more resources now to help us implement that plan.
Okay. Thank you. Didn't mean to interrupt. I was just.
No, of course. And then seventh grade writing, which this will be the last year that you'll see that separate. It'll be a combined assessment, as you guys are aware. And then eighth graders get to take four tests. So, reading and math, same trends. And then science and social studies. I'm going to pass it to Mr. Coulson for high school.
I always get to go last.
We can invert it next year. You can, you can.
I, I'm excited to tell you, it, a reminder that high school students take five EOCs over the course of their career and have to pass all five of them to graduate. We did see slight increases in English I and English II, which is not the norm for the rest of us, so we're excited about that. And again, the state did increase as well, but our, our percentages in English I and English II, we're very proud of. And those are two of the traditionally harder tests for students to pass. Algebra I and Biology, you can see the scores there. Again, slight regression, but not nearly as much as the state. And then the final one is the US History End of Course, and again, slight regression, but still less than the state. So, we're very proud of the job our teachers and students did last year, despite of the circumstances.
Okay. Well, it's nice to know that we didn't move the finish line. Like, you still had the same expectations for the students. They may not have gotten there like we have in the past, but you guys didn't lower your expectations of the students, correct? That's, that's important to me, that we didn't lower that. So, I like that part of it.
I think it's really nice just to have this data point. I mean, I've got to be honest, like, it was a rough year, and I expected lower numbers. And the fact that, you know, it seems recoverable is, is really full to me, so.
Yep.
Okay. Moving on to item 7A, select job order contracting as a procurement method.
All right, Mr. Foster.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Hewitt, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll. It is my pleasure to bring forward for your approval tonight a fairly long, tiled, complex project. But it's, uh, long because we're asking for a couple of different approvals in this one item. One is the approval of job order contracting as a contracting method for this project. And two is for the selection of the contractor and their proposal, so that we can move forward and do the work. First of all, the project is to reclaim some office space within this building. So, as of this month, all the tenants, the public entity or, uh, private companies that have been renting space from us over the years have all moved out. So, we can reclaim that space and reconfigure it for our use. So, we're going to turn those spaces into office space that are built for and going to be occupied and utilized by district employees. The second is the job order contracting con, uh, method of procuring construction. So, our board, local policy default method is CM at risk. And for most projects, that is absolutely the best value that we could put for you. For projects like this one, which are much smaller in nature, I mean, it's still a, a pretty good size number, but it's, it's under a million dollars. Uh, it's a relatively simple project. Back in 2019, in November 2019, your board approved a job order contracting and a pool of contractors who competed to be in the program for projects like this. So, tonight, we're bringing forward for your approval, uh, that method and the price. So, Joris Construction is one of the awarded vendors in that job order contracting program. Uh, like I said, they were approved by you, uh, the board in November 2019. We've been working with Joris for a while on this project, and they've prepared a proposal of 606,826 dollars. This time, we're requesting your approval of the contracting method and the contractor, as well as their proposal.
A move we approve is presented.
A motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion or questions?
I just thank you for anticipating my JOC question versus CMA. Had the question all ready to go, and you answered it for me.
Well, I, I wish it was my idea, but somebody gave me some advice.
Just take a break, man. Just take a break.
All right. No other conversation. I call a vote. All those in favor, show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Seeing none? All right. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Foster. And receive capital improvement updates.
At, at this time, I'd like to take the opportunity to bring you up to date on our capital improvements we have underway throughout the district. We're going to start with York Junior High School. It's a building addition, uh, which increases the overall capacity of York Junior High, and that project is very near its completion. So, you can see from our overhead picture, the yard is beginning to come together, the construction fencing is coming down, uh, grass is becoming established. Uh, on the inside of that building, the classrooms are coming together. So, we, we did add classroom space on the academic end of the building, and we also moved into the fine arts and athletics end over the summer. Uh, so, we started the demolition and rebuild of, uh, some of those areas, uh, at the end of May, uh, and then we're wrapping those up now. You can see here from the inside of the band hall, uh, those finishes are, are going back in place as we speak. Uh, classrooms come together, furniture in, are purchasing, uh, departments, uh, procured and delivered furniture, so it's being set up, uh, and it's scheduled to open, uh, when our students return from the August, uh, in August from the summer break. At the Woodlands College Park High School, another building addition there, which will increase the capacity of the main campus, or of College Park High School. You can see, just like York, the outside of the building is essentially complete. Uh, bus ramp is done, the trailers have been removed, they're starting to clean up and prepare. On the inside of that building, you see the classrooms are coming together. Again, uh, with furniture is being delivered and set up, I mean, so it's, uh, moving along very well. Uh, it is also scheduled to turn over for use by our students when they return, uh, in August. So, moving on to the Woodlands High School, another building addition to increase the capacity of that campus. Uh, this one is preparing the outside, uh, to, to clean up. You can see the sidewalks and the other approaches formed up, if you're looking real close to the dirt on the ground. We'll see the, the yard come together over the next couple of weeks. Uh, the exterior of the building is essentially done on the inside. Uh, we're putting in countertops and equipment and all the other things that make the classrooms come together. Uh, this is a shot of the new nutrition lab that's being built in that building. Uh, likewise, uh, furniture is being delivered as well. Uh, so, the contractor's working around, uh, those deliveries to get the, uh, classroom set up. Uh, it is on schedule, so it's scheduled to turn over, and our students will use it when they return from summer in August. Our campus renovations project, uh, the 2021 installment, a couple of major scopes of work. Armstrong Elementary is one of those. Uh, the primary focus was to create a larger, uh, kitchen and serving area to better serve the student population. That required a building addition. Uh, this is classroom space that's being added to that building so we can make the kitchen and serving line larger. Uh, the exterior of the building is, is wrapping up. So, I mean, I'd like to tell you, these pictures are all a few days old, and progress happens daily. So, the next piece here, you'll see the roof edge being cleaned up. Uh, they clean up the, the masonry scaffolding, things of that nature, and move on to the inside of the building. Uh, the kitchen equipment is being delivered, uh, as we speak. So, the kitchen is being, uh, put together, uh, installed and, and fired up over the next week. Uh, and it'll be ready when the students return in August, uh, which is just a couple of weeks away, we acknowledge. But this project is on schedule, and we'll be serving kids food on their first day of school with, uh, a little bit of confidence. Now, uh, another major scope of work is at Riot Elementary, which was a air conditioning building overhaul. So, it's essentially, if you walked in the campus over the summer and looked up, everything from the ceiling up was gone. Uh, so, we've put that all back together at this point. You're looking at the new mechanical equipment, piping and insulation, uh, that has been started up over the past week. We actually walked with our maintenance department, uh, yesterday to certify that we can cover everything up. So, they're putting the ceiling tile, the ceiling, uh, putting everything back together, because the building is essentially air-conditioned at this point with an entirely new system. And then all the systems that go along with it, the technology upgrades, the fire alarm upgrades, access control upgrades, everything else, uh, has happened this summer at Riot Elementary as well. And it'll be, it is on schedule, and we'll, and students will come into school on the first day with, with no issues, like nothing happened over the summer. At Creighton Elementary, it's a, a larger overhaul of the entire building. Uh, so, it's scheduled to go over two summers. The, this summer is the, uh, basically the air conditioning and above-ceiling systems overhaul. You can see the mechanical equipment is in. It's being started up, uh, later this week. Uh, and likewise, they're putting in the ceiling grids and all the other things that make that system come together. And over the next two weeks, they'll be cleaning it up and moving it, uh, into service. Uh, we're receiving some of our admin staff this week, and when the teachers come back, you'll be ready for them to, to use and set up their classrooms. And when the students come back, they'll have a fully air-conditioned building that is 100% functional on the inside. We will remain on that campus doing some work, uh, finishing up work on the roof, finishing work, work on the fire, uh, storage water tanks and some, and the small kitchen addition we had to do to accommodate those things. And then we'll wrap it up next summer, uh, and that project will be finished. It is currently, for this phase, on schedule, and school will open in August, uh, without issue. At Morehead Junior High, this will be the new Morehead Junior High School. Uh, that building is on schedule. It's scheduled to open in August of 2023. So, you can see from this picture, the building slab is essentially complete. The building structure is underway, and you can see the athletics improvements, the track curving around the football field and track is essentially, uh, done. So, they're, they're working through all the infrastructure to put that new athletic facility together. That project, like I said, is on schedule. It's scheduled to open August of 2023.
Looks like your retention pile is almost full already.
Uh, well, since you brought up rain, we're going to talk about Connor High School. This is a major renovation project, where we're going through multiple phases, uh, over the next, uh, almost five years. So, we'll be, we'll be there through, uh, the calendar year of 2025. Uh, the current, uh, phase of work that we're trying to get through is the road for the new bus loop and the new parking lot on the northwest corner of that site. Rain has been our chief hurdle over this last several weeks, but we've managed to work through the rainstorms. I've come to say that if it rains in the afternoon, we're in good shape. And if it rains in the morning, we've got a little bit more trouble. But the crews out there have been diligent and working, uh, since this picture's been, was taking more concrete's down. We've got another large pour scheduled for Friday morning. Uh, and then we'll be almost over the hill. Not ready to call it just yet, but we will make the August, uh, return for school. Uh, it will be, uh, open, uh, but we are having to work very diligently in between thunderstorms to make this happen. But, like I said, the crews are working and they are being successful, uh, immensely. That was a high hurdle, so to speak. Uh, that does kick off the next phase. So, uh, over August, September, October, we'll start showing you the progression of the building pads for the, for the new building, uh, CTE buildings and the new athletic, athletics facilities that, uh, move us through this, this first major phase of that project. Our new jet center, which is our teacher training facility at the end of Wood Forest Bank Stadium, uh, you can see from this picture, it looks like a lot of progress is being made. Uh, the building slab is done. Matter of fact, the second floor slab is done, the building structure is going in place. We look forward to starting masonry in the very near future. On the south end zone, you can see on the navatorium side, the structure in this picture is about a week old. Uh, so, the structure for the schoolward's up. If you drove by there today, you'd see the panels are up. Uh, so, our current path, uh, that, for us, the, the critical path that we're taking is to get the stadium ready for the football season. Uh, once we get that ready, then we'll, you'll see our construction footprint received back to the teacher training center itself. Uh, but that project is on schedule. Uh, stadium work is also on schedule, and we are, uh, going to have the stadium ready for the first scrimmage on August 19th, and then we'll have the, uh, building ready in the spring semester of 2022. Now, our safety and security project, which is a district-wide effort, this is the 2021 installment, and just like every month, there's not a whole lot to show you, because there's not much to see. We're looking at a picture of the interior of Oak Ridge Elementary's reception area. And the project is on schedule, and like I tell you every month, it covers access control, uh, cameras, security systems, the, uh, impact-resistant glazing around the reception areas. That project is moving along, moving along well. We'll wrap it up in September. Uh, our design teams are working now on next installments, design plan for the next geographical area we're going to tackle. So, we look forward later this year to bring you the, uh, the GNP for the 2022 installment for your approval and continuing a successful project as that one moves up throughout the district. At Gordon Reed Elementary in the Connor High School feeder zone on the west side of the district, uh, you can see that the building slab is, uh, it's, it's complete at this point. The building structure is underway. You see a lot of roof deck on the fine arts and, and athletics end of the building. Paving's going down. Uh, the project is on schedule. It is scheduled to open in August of 2022. Masonry is our next major scope work about to fire up. So, you can see the concrete block, uh, being delivered in this picture. Uh, and then we'll start building walls and getting that towards our next big milestone, which is drying in the building, uh, which you'll hear me talk about a lot over the next several months. At Oak Ridge High School, this is a big overhaul. It's also where we're adding our South County CTE, uh, campus or building addition to Oak Ridge, uh, High School. This summer's work is primarily getting us set up so that we can continue working throughout the school year and, and facilitate the, uh, transitions that campus is going to make. So, we've been working interior, creating the pathways for the new piping systems. We've been working on the exterior, getting existing equipment out of the way so that we can build the new central plant, which will be the heart and soul of the mechanical system for that campus. Uh, and we'll be kicking off and moving forward on the admin addition. That will help us reorganize how that campus is situated. As we move those, through those phases, we'll get into the CTE addition. Uh, we'll be, uh, at Oak Ridge High School for almost 30 months. Uh, that project is currently on schedule. At Wilkerson Intermediate, it's a PE classroom addition so that we can have a dedicated PE space for the, for that intermediate campus. You can see the nice clean patch of dirt on the right side of the building. Uh, that's the building pad for the new gym addition. Uh, we've been also working on the, uh, bus ramp, where a bunch of utilities had to cross through there. We actually placed that concrete on Monday, so by the end of this week, uh, it'll be clean and ready. Next week, we'll be able to run the buses on it for their, uh, and ready, and next week, we'll be able to run the buses on it for their training runs they have to do before they approach the new school year. That project is currently on schedule, the critical path is the metal building delivery. That's one that's got us a little bit nervous. It's coming a little bit later in the fall that we would like. Our contractor is working on a plan to still turn the building over for our use in January when the kids return from the winter break. So the current schedule is to turn that building over for our use in January of 2022. And then at Conroe High School, it's the ninth grade, we're doing a building addition there to help increase the capacity and deal with our growing population in the Conroe High School feeder zone. We've been working on the building pad there, so you can see right in the heart of the campus is where we're going to add the classroom space for that building. And then it's hard to see, but in the bottom-left corner, you see the nice white or light-colored ribbon of concrete around the bus ramp. We were able to eliminate some of the gravel areas there where the buses were running off the side of the pavement, so that work has been completed, and it's ready for the buses to run on next week. So that project is on schedule, we'll be there through the summer of '22. This building is scheduled to turn over for our use for the 2022, '23 school year. And that is our update.
Leave any schools out?
Yeah, I think that was all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster, appreciate it.
I do have one question, Mr. Foster. I know we have all the contracts, but I hear all the time about building material costs going up orbitally, and we're not finding any issues with delays and, and for what I heard you say, everything's on track and on time.
So delays have been our biggest issue. So if you recall, when we did our bond plan, our capital improvement plan for that made up the 2019 bond, there was a progression of cost throughout those years. So we've been relatively lucky that we've been under on some, over on others, we finished even currently. We anticipate, hopefully, staying on that trend. We're watching steel in particular, that's one that's been kind of wild. We believe, and the committees that I get to participate in believe, that we're going to see some reduction in those prices over the next year or so. So I think we're at the peak of steel, or very near the peak of steel, and the good news is that we won't be bidding another project till later in this calendar year, so hopefully, we'll be on the downside of that for the next one. But so far, our budgets have been tracking as we, with the plan and that the voters voted on.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Foster. Moving on to item eight A, consider award of RFP 21-03-09 toner and ink jet cartridges.
All right, Mr. Rick Reeves.
Mr. Rick Reeves.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board and Dr. Knoll. Tonight, we are requesting that the board considers awarding RFP number 21-03-09 toner and ink jet cartridges to the following vendors for an annual estimated expenditure of $450,000. We're looking at the Treehouse for our original equipment manufacturer OEM cartridges, and Vquest Office Machines and Supplies for our remanufactured cartridges. The request for proposals pertaining to the purchase of these OEM and remanufactured toner and ink jet cartridges for the district are emailed to registered vendors through our C I S D electronic e-bidding system advertised on our C I C purchasing website, as well as two times in the Courier. Unit pricing was requested for new and remanufactured toner and ink jet cartridges and a catalog discount to quote additional toner and ink jet toner through July 2022, with an option to renew it automatically for two additional one-year terms through July 31st, 2024. We had 18 vendors submit bid responses. The proposals, including the testing of these requested samples, were extensively evaluated by the purchasing department. Funds for these purchases are provided in the C I C general fund, and best value offers are recommended for board award, and at this time, we request your approval.
So we have a motion?
Second to motion.
We have a second. Any conversation, questions, seeing none? All those in favor, uplifted hand? All those opposed, the same sign? All right, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Reeves. While you're up there, we can do item B.
Thank you. Again, we're requesting that the board awards RFP number 21-04-07 for medical stop-loss coverage to H M Insurance Group for an estimated annual expenditure of approximately $2.5 million. Stop-loss insurance, also known as excess insurance, is a product that provides protection against catastrophic or unpredictable losses. It is purchased by employers who have decided to self-fund their employee benefits plan but do not want to assume 100% of the liability for losses arising from the plans. Under stop-loss policy, the insurance company becomes liable for losses that exceed certain limits called deductibles. With assistance from the district's employee benefits consultant, Gallagher Benefit Services, requests for proposals pertaining to the procurement of medical stop-loss coverage for the district's existing medical plan were emailed to registered vendors through the electronic C I C e-bidding system and advertised on the website and also on the Courier. The vendors were asked to provide medical stop-loss quotes for multiple individual stop-loss levels, which was $550,000, which is our current level. We also asked for $600,000 and $650,000. These quotes included both medical and prescriptions, and we had three vendors submit responses. Upon review and request for best and final offers, it was determined that the proposal from H M Insurance Group that mirrored our current 550 I S L option with no lasering provided the best value, which is an increase of approximately $69,000 or 2.8% over the current planned cost of $2.4 million administered by United Healthcare, who proposed an increase of over 21%. The contract will be effective for two years through August 31st, 2023, with an option to renew annually for three additional one-year terms through August of 2026. These proposals were evaluated by members of the district's financial services and human resources departments with guidance from Gallagher. Funds are provided in the self-funded health insurance fund, and at this time, we recommend your approval.
All right, we have a motion?
So move.
We have a second? Any conversation?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
So how long had we been with United Healthcare?
This was year two.
Okay, okay. And before that?
We just finished year two.
Aetna?
It was Aetna.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. So this is a new vendor to us, though?
Yes, sir.
But we've fully vetted them, and we feel comfortable with them?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure I got the numbers you said correct. So United, who we were with before, increased 21% their price?
Correct.
And this new vendor, at the same $550,000 level, is an increase of 2.8% or $69,000?
Over our current, correct.
Of our current one.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's just the stop loss, right?
Yeah, the stop.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, again. All right, all those in favor, show with an uplifted hand? Any opposed, by the same sign? Very good.
Thank you very much.
Motion passes. Appreciate it. And C, receive financial reports. Ms. Carza?
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board and Dr. Knoll. It is my pleasure this evening to present the financial statements as of June 30th, 2021. Our first statement is the balance sheet. Presented here is the general fund, the debt service fund, child nutrition, and self-funded insurance. Total assets in the general fund, $309 million. Cash and investments in the general fund, the majority of our cash and investments is in the state pools at $227.3 million. We have $53 million in long-term investments with TCG for total cash and investments of Here's our income statement. The income statement shows the district's revenues and expenditures. Total revenue in the general fund year-to-date of $536.5 million, total expenses of $395.7. This is our 2019 bond referendum. To date, we have expended or encumbered $272.9 million, leaving $378.5 remaining. Our self-funded insurance, as we anticipated, June was a very busy month for the plan. We had a deficit of $367,000, revenue totaling $4.4 million, and expenditures at $4.7. We are still trending at a gain of $644,000 for the year, so we'll see if that takes us through the next two summer months. And participation at our wellness center was up in June to 4/18, and part of that could have been teachers are out for the summer and have the availability of time to go see the doctors, so we will continue to see if that trend continues.
Ms. Carza, could you go back?
Yes.
Do we have historical data to know if that $644 is close, or what these two months have normally?
I mean, if we trend based on June, we should be right on target. I would have to go back and look to see what July and August would bring.
Yeah. It's gonna get eaten up.
Negative $1 million.
Right.
Thank you.
So our investments as of June, total par value is just over $606 million. The pools are yielding .08. Our investments with Wood Forest at .11. Our longer-term investments with TCG have a weighted average maturity of 443, yielding just over 1.11. And our combined portfolio is yielding almost 18 basis points, but compared to the 90-day T bill, which we did see a slight increase this month, is at .048.
All right, thank you, Ms. Carza.
Can someone remind me, can you go back to the bond usage?
Yes.
What was, what was the adjustment to Conroe High School?
I believe that was a scope in the project.
It was a capacity, so we increased the scope of the project to make it a larger capacity building, based on enrollment growth since the passage of the bond, and projecting out as to when a future high school might be able to open. It's the curious to that next threshold. Yeah, we're getting more square footage.
I got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rice, I did have a couple of questions for you. Just for the record, I know I run the risk of entertaining ignorance here, but how many meetings did we have on a budget?
This year?
Yes.
I think we had three budget workshops and two formal budget presentations.
Of those, the public invited?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
All right, very good. Any other questions or comments? Okay, moving to item 11? Can we move to item 11?
Yes, we can, yes.
Okay, very good. Moving to item 11, A, select delegate to the Tasby Delegate Assembly.
So we have an opportunity here tonight, we would need you all to select your representative, and I'm going to talk about both items just because, and I'm not a Tasby expert, so when I make a mistake, we're going to have Mr. Moore correct me. But we first need to select a delegate to the Tasby General Assembly, so it's basically our representative into the large body. Now, because we have grown as a district and now become one of the 10 largest school districts in the state, we also now are eligible to have a seat on Tasby's Board of Directors. Now, you can select the same person for these two, to be these, fill these two roles because they won't serve concurrently. The first A is for, to serve in the delegate assembly until time, I believe it's next in the summer? September, when we will take our seat on the Board of Directors, and so if you did select the same person for each of these two duties, they would then make that move from the General Assembly to the Board of Directors. So you can select two different people, you can select the same person for both roles, it's your option, but it's your representative to the Tasby Board.
How long is it term?
It's a great question. Mr. Moore?
So we will have the seat on the Board of Directors as long as our ADA exceeds 125% of state ADA.
Okay.
And we can change when we need to. The elected positions coming from the regions are two-year terms, I believe, so there'll probably be a process every two years to reinstate our director.
So to be clear, on the Tasby Board of Directors, there are representatives that come from each region, and then there are representatives, like you said, from the districts that are 125% of the average state ADA that are seated as well. That's roughly the top 10 districts, right?
Exactly, right.
All right. I'm going to nominate Mr. Moore for both positions. A second to motion. We got a first second?
Many, all right, we got a motion and a second.
Second, here, no discussion.
All right, any discussion? Very.
Can we do separate votes?
We can't, yeah, so A, so first, select a delegate for the Tasby Delegate Assembly.
I nominate Mr. Scott Moore.
A second to motion.
I accept the nomination, Mr. President.
All right, all those in favor, replace it, and any opposed? All right, motion carries for Scott Moore on that. And item B?
I nominate Mr. Scott Moore, Tasby Board of Director.
A second to motion.
I accept the nomination, Mr. President.
All right, all those in favor, show of hands. Any opposed? All right, Mr. Moore, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Our first time ever to have a Board of Director for Conroe I S D, that's a big deal.
It is a big deal. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move. Let me, a second.
Very good, thank you.